I will call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM on Monday, July 1st. This is the full tour of Carter County Commissioners in regular session. Uh, also, if I can get my hand quick. Yes, we'll read the emergency egress plan. In the unlikely event that we need to exit this building, our primary evacuation room is the south entrance, which is on the monument side of the building. Our assembly point is in the back parking lot, which is considered the employee parking lot. The secondary evacuation is the stairwell across from the elevators, and we will still assemble in the back parking lot. Do not attempt to use the elevator in the event of an emergency. Should there be a need for an AED, there's one available on each floor. They are located next to the entrance of the elevators. One quick housekeeping note, the red strings are elevated on the fourth end of the building on each floor, and the handicap accessible red strings are on this floor that we're on right now. Are there any questions you'd like me to discuss on this? For the board of commissioners? Okay, a reminder to turn off cell phones. And at this time, we will have the official roll call, Madam Chairman. All right, we do have a form present. We continue. At this time, before we approve the agenda, I'm going to give a point of privilege to Commissioner Dr. Robert Aethaf. He has the floor to address some of the things we're running on the scene.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the recognition. I think many of us in this room know that tonight is unprecedented, particularly for the first district. In my almost 12 years of serving on the county commission, this is the first time that we've had six applicants for a single position. I think that's important for us to recognize, and also important for us to recognize, if you're not nominated, then you do not get to address the commission and express your views as a candidate. Therefore, before we get to item 11, and if I have to put it in the form of a motion, when we get there, I will do so. Before we actually do the nomination process, I would like for each of our candidates to address this commission, tell us why they want to be here. If they are critical of what we've done in the past, then I'd like to hear their constructive criticism. And I also would like to know what they think they can accomplish during their time on the commission. Now, you go back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looking over the agenda, does anyone see anything you'd like to change in any way? Okay.
I don't know if it's possible to do this. Some of the guys are kind of on the phone a lot. I'm wondering if we can move the mayor report to 16 maybe in front of where they're talking about. Is that how to take it from what we're talking about? Can we do that? Or will that be? It's not worth it.
I have no problem with moving the, the, the edit that has been requested and which I'm okay with is to move item 16 to make oral report. Right before 9/11, so we'll call it 10B just for the sake of ease. So 16 moving up to 10B. Does anyone else request an edit? Okay, so the floor is open if you want to approve the agenda as edited.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Brad Johnson. On your screen, it says motion by Todd Smith. Can we get that changed? Brad Johnson on the motion, and we'll do Todd Smith on the second.
I don't know. I just don't know. Brad, would you go?
Okay, she's got it corrected on the screen, so I'm going to call for the vote on the amended agenda. All right, the motion has passed, so we have an agenda to follow. Next on the agenda is our prayer and allegiance pledge. Those will be led by Commissioner Dr. Charlie Thomas and the pledge by Commissioner Nancy Brown. Please stand and come to your seat.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you tonight with thankful hearts, thankful that we live in a country, a state, and a county where we are free to publicly acknowledge you. Thank you for Carter County. Thank you for the folks who call this place home. Thank you for helping us to climb out of the devastation of Hurricane Helene. Thank you for the men and women who serve us each day. And tonight, Father, we praise you as the creator of the universe and the creator of government. Father, we believe that you have placed each of us here for a reason, and I pray that we seek to glorify you in our words and in our actions at this meeting. Help us to be patient and kind. Help us to be gracious and loving. Help us to serve our country and our county to the best of our ability. We realize that we often fall short of what you would have us to do, but tonight I pray for wisdom to make decisions that are best for our citizens, that we put away petty arguments and seek after real solutions. Unify us as a body, help us to represent you well, and it is in the precious name of your sweet son Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, we pledge.
Our allegiance is to unify the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies, for reading those. Now, we would like to recognize our appointed officials. If you guess that we were having a row with them, would you all please stand?
Thank you very much.
Look over the minutes motion, 16. We'll do this separately. We have three sets of minutes to approve. June 16th, first. If your electronics are working, please make motions and seconds using your electronic devices. Okay, so for June 16th, we have a motion by Eric Frager, second by Leslie Hughes. Does anyone see any changes that need to be made for June 16th? Let's vote. Any deal?
Yes.
Okay, those minutes have been approved by the majority. Moving to June 30th. So for June 30th, we have the same commissioners that in the motion in the second, Eric Frager, Leslie Hughes, thank you. At this time, if you have any corrections that need to be made, please speak up. When I have one, on page five, writing, item number two. In that motion by Dr. Aethaf, it says SOL-I-C instead of SOL-I-D. Do you guys have anything else? All right, let's vote on the June 30th minutes. Your big profit?
Yes.
Any deal?
Epstein.
Okay, those minutes have been approved. Quick to July 30th. We have a motion from Dr. Thomas and a second by Nancy Brown on July 30th minutes. Any corrections needed? Let's vote. Any deal?
Epstein.
Okay, so that has passed. That's all the minutes we have to approve tonight. We will now hear from the clerk's office and the seeking, uh, Duggars and Moss.
Eric Duggar, Ashley Sluter, Brittany Tanner, Diane Hughes, Emily Bellter, Zoe Kate Wilford, Lenny Arne Morris, Tracy Lynn Tribbit, Brett A. Cole, Brandon Lee Casey, Chuck Pierce, Sherry King, Jenny M. Curtis, Rebecca Mars.
There's a motion by Angie Nodham to approve, seconded by Julie S. Lynn. Any questions? Please vote. Your profit?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
All right, those votes are through for Duggars and Moss. We are at item number 10 on our agenda. And by the way, I forgot a mention earlier, we don't have many. Are we down to three now? Any calls for extra agendas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we didn't have any many tonight, that's why I didn't walk out there and just give you the 85 ones and neither of them are through to the side, they called her on the front row if you want to step in here. Okay, item number 10, a resolution recognizing the leadership and staff of the Carter County Detention Center for having no deficiencies found during an annual state inspection for the third consecutive year, and we will have that read by our chairman at this time.
Chair, remember maybe the chair probably would be our attendant.
I'm going to leave off on this very briefly. We started unprecedented, um, in Carter County 11 days ago. TCI came into this annual surprise inspection, even for the third year, we had cigarette deficiencies. I don't know the time that any other jail has had that happen, but I don't want to go back and go the history of it, but I did want to go back to nine in November of 2022. You all took a chance on us and made a life-changing difference in our employees. It's been, it's been blessings after blessing after blessing for what you do. There's 21 criteria to make a perfect score, and none of those are to do with the physical building itself. I think our maintenance people are out here, they do a fabulous job, our admin staff, the boots on the ground. This is not something that's easily obtainable. I mean, it's not. But to have a perfect score three years in a row, I'm still in shock over it. But I personally want to thank each of you on behalf of all the staff in the corrections division for believing in us and making this happen, because this is as much for you as it is for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
This is a resolution recognizing the leadership and staff of the Carter County Detention Center, having no deficiencies found during the annual state inspection for the third consecutive year, whereas Tennessee Corrections Institute conducts an annual unannounced inspection of all detention facilities throughout the state to ensure all standards are met, whereas the annual inspection reviews many aspects of the detention center, including the physical facility, staffing levels, employee training, inmate food and medical services, and facility operational policies and procedures. Whereas on Thursday, July 10, 2025, TCI conducted its annual inspection at the Carter County Detention Center and reported that the facility met all standards with no deficiencies found for the third consecutive year. Whereas the final inspection report was transmitted along with the letter from TCI Executive Director William Wall, congratulating Sheriff Fraley for the degree of professionalism at the facility. Whereas this unprecedented accomplishment would not have been possible without the professionalism and leadership provided by Sheriff Mike Fraley, jail administrator Captain Matthew Patterson, and the efforts of all the dedicated employees and staff who worked tirelessly to maintain the highest operational standards at the Carter County Detention Center. Whereas it is appropriate for the Board of County Commissioners to specifically recognize this impressive accomplishment. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners for Carter County Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this the 21st day of July 2025, with a lawful quorum set forth being present and majority voting in the affirmative, that the Board hereby adopts this resolution officially recognizing the outstanding work and professionalism of Sheriff Mike Fraley, jail administrator Captain Matthew Patterson, and all the dedicated employees and staff working at the Carter County Detention Center. Part of work made it possible for the facility to have a third consecutive state inspection with no deficiencies found. Be further resolved that this resolution shall take effect from and after the date of its approval, the welfare of the county demanding.
Thank you, sir. We already have a motion by Eric Frager, seconded by Nancy Brown, so let's all vote on this resolution recognizing the outstanding leadership at the Carter County Detention Center. Your profit? Any deal?
Yes.
And of course, that resolution has passed. Congratulations and thank you for your service and efficient work. Thank you so much. All right, item 10B will now be to make oral report, Mayor Patty Woodby.
We're going to start off by, there's some recognitions I've been asked to do, and one special recognition. Um, I'm going to speak about a colleague, one of your colleagues that's sitting here on the floor with you. I had the honor to serve with her when I was a commissioner in the Rhode Mountain District, and I have a bigger honor to serve with her alongside of her as the mayor of Carter County. I'm going to recognize Nancy Brown. Nancy has, is the longest-serving female in Carter County. She has served this county as a county commissioner for 19 years. So that's a pretty big honor. So we've reached out to some pretty hot people to recognize Nancy, and I think Nancy's family's here. I asked them to come and, and witness this. I'll start off by reading the proclamation. Of course, the governor has seen a few things, and the general assembly also sent you a recognition. So Nancy, come on up here. I want to read this with you. We're at a community for Nancy Brown, born on March 6th, and I think she's back in the day of it, and raised in the heart of Avery County. Of three children. Whereas she graduated from Avery County High School in 1984, and that same year married her loving husband Tommy Brown, with whom she recently celebrated 41 wonderful years of marriage. Whereas together, they have raised three children and are proud grandparents of six beloved grandchildren. Whereas Commissioner Brown took office in September 2006 and has served Carter County with unwavering dedication for nearly 19 years. And whereas she proudly represents the second district and has been a fierce advocate for the people of her community. And whereas she is recognized as the longest-serving female commissioner in Carter County's history, and throughout her tenure has exemplified the qualities of a true public servant, compassionate, committed, and community-minded. And whereas Nancy is a strong and loving Christian woman who leads with her heart always, believes of others, puts the needs of others above her own, and enriching our county through her faith, wisdom, and leadership. Now therefore, I, Mayor Patty Woodby, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, do hereby issue this proclamation on behalf of Carter County and the citizens of our community to recognize and extend a heartfelt appreciation to Commissioner Nancy Brown for her many years of devoted service and for the lasting impact she has made on Carter County. In the state capitol for 19 years of dedicated service in Carter, on the Carter County Commission. This, this is a certificate of appreciation, appreciation from Governor Bill Leake. And whereas the general assembly also adopted a resolution on behalf of Commissioner Brown for her service to Carter County. I won't read it, but it will show you that all signatures of our representatives have signed off appreciating her. Has her copy or copy? This is a flag on behalf of Carter County and the county commission that I would like to present to you and thank you for your service. Thank you, love her heart. We've got them all in here. See, you didn't even know this was happening, did you? Patty, look there so she can get your photos. Let me tell you, she's fierce. I've served with her and had to call on her for help, and there's nothing like her. That's for sure.
Thank you so much.
May I simply ask all the constables to please come up to the front?
All right, we're going to do a proclamation, and we're going to recognize a special constable here tonight. Um, this is a proclamation honoring Constable Bob Carroll.
Come on, man.
Come on, that ball. Whereas Constable Bob Carroll has faithfully served the people of Carter County as constable for the eighth district since first being elected in 1974, dedicating over five decades to public safety and community service. Whereas Constable Bob, Constable Carroll has held leadership roles within the Tennessee Constable Association, including two terms as executive director and CEO, and is a founding member of the West Carter County Volunteer Fire Department, serving since 1971. Whereas his service has extended far beyond his official duties, working as a courthouse bailiff, organizing a community watch, checking in on elderly residents, volunteering with Second Harvest Food Bank, and remaining deeply involved in his charge and faith. Whereas Constable Carroll has completed countless hours of law enforcement and firefighting training, including hazmat, safe schools, safe schools instruction, always striving to go above and beyond. Whereas at this year's Tennessee Constable Association Annual Convention, Constable Carroll was honored with the Frankie Lacks Senior Award, the highest recognition presented awarded to a constable who exemplifies leadership, service, and dedication to both their community and fellow public servants. Now therefore, I, Mayor Patty Woodby, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, do issue this proclamation on behalf of Carter County, Tennessee, and the citizens of our community to extend my sincere congratulations and deepest thanks to Constable Bob Carroll for his lifetime of service to the eighth district and beyond, and commend him on receiving this prestigious and well-earned award. Congratulations, Bob. And if you guys will just stay still for just one minute, we've got one more, and I'm finishing up, I promise. This is going to be a proclamation recognizing all of the constables for their service during Hurricane Helene. We wanted to say our gratitude for your service. Whereas the constables of Carter County have long served as dedicated, are dedicated public servants, working to uphold the safety, peace, and well-being of our communities across the county. Whereas these elected officials often serve quietly and without recognition, yet their presence is vital in times of both routine and crisis. And whereas during the crisis brought on by Hurricane Helene, the constables of Carter County answered the call to serve swiftly and without hesitation, stepping in wherever needed to assist emergency responders, secure neighborhoods, and ensure the safety of residents. Whereas their actions included conducting welfare checks, directing traffic, assisting with evacuations, and providing a steady presence in areas affected by the storm. Whereas their efforts were not only a demonstration of duty but of compassion, offering reassurance to residents, helping neighbors in distress, and standing as a steady presence in the face of uncertainty. Whereas their commitment to duty, even in the face of danger, reflects the very best of public service and the spirit of community that defines our county. And whereas their efforts during Hurricane Helene did not go unnoticed and will be remembered with deep gratitude by those they served. Now therefore, I, Mayor Patty Woodby, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, do hereby issue this proclamation on behalf of Carter County, Tennessee, and the citizens of our community to formally commend and express our heartfelt appreciation to the Carter County constables for their outstanding service during Hurricane Helene. Thank you all very much. And finally, this will just be a real quick appointment to the SIAM utility board. Um, they finally have a board member that's in controversy in the community, but they're getting back on track. Um, whereas the Board of Commissioners for the SIAM utility submitted a list of nominees to fill a vacancy on the board due to, due to the resignation of Commissioner Votoff. Now therefore, I, Patty Woodby, have reviewed the certified list submitted by the Board of Commissioners for the SIAM utility, and by virtue and authority vested in me by the laws of the great state of Tennessee, do hereby issue the order pursuant to the Tennessee Code annotated, officially appointing Nathan Jenkins to the Board of Commissioners for the SIAM utility for a full term of four years effective July 21st, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Woodby. All right, item number 11 is the appointment to fill the first district's vacancy on the county. Okay, so that motion passes. At this time, I'm gonna ask all six to kind of stand in front of your [INAUDIBLE]. You all just kind of standing along like the constables did, just kind of spread across here. There's somebody coming this way. So, we will ask you now, one at a time, to go over to the podium, just because there's a microphone there, and if you don't mind at least talking into that microphone, fill us your name. And then the two questions are: Why did you want to serve as a first district commissioner? And then do you have any criticisms on things we've done in the past or suggestions you would like to make of this commission or afterward? Like what would you want to see changed or done differently? Is that okay? Okay, so whoever wants to go first to step on behind the podium to the microphone?
My name is Ronald Root. I live in [INAUDIBLE] over here. I also live in District One up on [INAUDIBLE]. And I've noticed that Willie Campbell's for your commission before, and I thought, well, Willie, if I did the job, I'll try to do the same thing Willie did, maybe help you all a little bit once he has, but I'm not real sure. Because I've never been a commissioner, but I'd be willing to help in one second. And I donate a lot of my time at the shops for different things. I don't need no time here to be as adequate as anything. And I appreciate you, love.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak to you. My name is William Nichols. I can hardly suggest if you've not acted yet. You can imagine how embarrassing it is, your freshman year of high school, and they're announcing homerooms, and the person announcing says, "William Nichols," and everybody goes, "Who's that?" "It's me, Dad." But anyhow, I live on Ranger Estates. I believe, I sent each of you an email and talked to you a little bit about myself. I understand it went to, so I hope that you saw it. I believe I bring a different side of things, according to the commissions that I come to provide. I've got quite a bit of experience with nonprofit budgets. I was responsible for the budget as the operations director of the rescue squad for many years. The last one I managed was 3.3 million. I was project manager, co-project manager, building the rescue squad complex that's up there. I had the board directors of the rescue squad looking me in the face as I was the one running the billing office. Can we pay for this? Can you give us enough money to pay for this if we do this? I had to answer them yes. So I was cutting my neck out quite a bit. I mentioned in the email, I served this about a month in South County American Little League, the whole time my son was like that. My son's a product of South County, he's in school here. He also military in ATSU, so he's my [INAUDIBLE]. Just bring a lot to the table. I will realize that my vote, giving points down to the commission, represents 124 of every citizen in Carter County. It's not just the first district. Yes, I will represent. I have goals that the residents of the first district tell me to prove, but I also understand that everything that I do affects everybody in Carter County. It does. It's 124. And as a former fleet manager, I should be able to help distinguish any time we have those discussions about flat problems when we get lost. I can pretty well handle that. I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, sir.
Mark Levens, maybe no. We dealt, I sat on the commission four years, and it was a good experience. I learned a lot. I voted for stuff that voted against stuff. That's a lot of it about to go back and change. I would. Thank you. You did a good job. Was everybody gonna agree on everything? No, but no. And I will tell you the truth. I had that impression a lot of the last time. I'll tell you something, I'll do it. I don't have no big degree. If I can, I just got a high-stu education. Worked my flat head every year, got jobs for it. And I'm just way sure, I'm sure Shannon White's a dog shit. And this may not be appropriate, Sheriff, to do this. I said some stuff, and did her, I know. But at that time, I thought I was right. I might have stayed here, wouldn't be safe. I didn't realize what I was gonna do. I saw a lot of work, and I learned that. Kind of a little affirmation. Shannon, I don't know if she's sure or not. I hopefully apologize to you. If you could support me, it'd be good. If you don't, you're no heartfelt, you learn to get mad over nothing when it comes down to that. I believe in doing what's right and voting what I think's right, not what else wants me to go against. I supported, I enjoyed it, I learned a lot. I'm fortunate enough to get back to you back. I hope I work some more. And I thank you guys. Mr. Aka, for the occasion of the first district. I don't know much about Dave, but I think he has a good dad. I know nobody. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Like I say, thank you for letting me here before you could speak. Most of you know me, I had a chance to work with you in my capacity at the Sheriff's Department through Budget, and when this position first came open, the first thing when I was asked if I was interested, I'd say I had to go home and ask my wife. And I think I have the support of both her and the good Lord. Public service has always been dear to my heart. I'm a member of the Sheriff's Department for thirty-four years, and serving my community is what I know best. I have worked closely with you in Budget, in Commission, and some of the committee meetings, and there's not a group of people I respect more than this group out here. And I know whatever decision you make tonight will be the right one. Until that, I have enough experience with law enforcement and serving the public that I could be of benefit to this commission through the issues that you face now and the ones that will come in the future. Any consideration you can give me, I do really appreciate it.
On Lawrence Street, I'm the [INAUDIBLE] District One. Dr. Aka, sir, before I answer your questions, I've got one or a couple of little things to make you aware of, all of these. In my early years, I worked, started off at Mountain View Correctional Institution as an officer, and I was promoted to sergeant, and I was next in line for lieutenant. So I understand what the sheriff has to deal with as far as dealing with housing inmates. We had both state and federal inmates. We also had inmates that was pre-aliency, wedding penalty charges. And after that, I moved to Florida, and I lived down there for a while, and I took the last of my savings and I become a licensed Florida Home Inspector for both residential and commercial. So I think I'd be really good on buildings and grounds because I know it's just structurally stable. I have all the credentials as far as that goes. Now to answer the true question that Dr. Aka wants to know, I've been very critical of a lot of you for a lot of reasons, mainly because I care. Not just about District One, I care about the whole entire county. I care about their tax bill because it matters. I don't believe in spending money you don't have, and I don't believe in spending on stuff that you don't need. Every tax dollar in this county, everybody that pays property taxes is very important. What I would like to help change, if I'm permitted to sit in that seat, is this county needs total 100% transparency. If you have that, you don't have people sitting out here complaining. A lot of times they're here complaining because they don't quite understand what's going on, and they feel like they've been wronged. That may not always be the case. It may not never be the case, but that's how they feel. Their feelings matter. Every person in this county should matter to every other person in this county. All have things.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you can take your seats back, but as you go, I just wanna thank you for your willingness to serve. We have not had this happen before, and it is difficult to choose between you, I think any one of you, who made a good commissioner. Some of the hardest things we have to do as commissioners is vote on things like vacancies and, you know, to keep remaining and kind of vote for people on committees, things like that. Those are some of the hardest odds that we have. So please know that we don't hate this lightly. And now at this time, the floor is open for nominations.
Sheriff, may I make one more comment? I would like to inform the commission that Shannon White, who also applied for this position, would want to attend.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wish to make a nomination?
I nominate Lawrence Street.
Okay, thank you. I nominate Mark Levens.
I nominate David Nichols.
You have nominations?
Yes, ma'am. I nominate Mark Levens.
Okay.
Is there gonna be a nomination?
Thank you. Anybody else? Just gotta be honest.
Can you read who's been nominated?
Mark Levens, Lawrence Street, David Nichols.
Nominate Keith Range.
Okay. Keith Range. All right, I'm gonna see some nominations, and we will be voting on one of these four candidates that have been nominated. We will have to do a voice vote. We don't have the capability by our devices to do this. So when the first office calls your name, please say one of the candidates. So he will either say Levens or Mark Levens, Street or Lawrence Street, Nichols or David Nichols, or Range or Keith Range. Does anyone have a question before voting? First office, when you're ready.
Nichols.
Dr. Aka?
Nichols.
Nancy Brown, Levens. Avery Nguyen?
Levens.
Julie Nguyen, Levens. Bradley Johnson?
Nichols.
Just to clarify, was that Nichols?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Burrow?
Levens.
Angie Odom?
Street.
Danny Deal?
Street.
Gary Kemp?
Range.
Jerry Prophet?
Levens.
Lisa Childers?
Street.
Ginger Holder?
Levens.
Charlene Thomas?
Nichols.
Johnny Cable?
Range.
Jason Clausen?
Range.
Todd Smith?
Range.
Carol Whaley?
Nichols.
Leslie Hughes?
Range.
Erin Frazier?
Levens.
Jerry Stow?
Levens.
Julie Collins?
Range.
She's so range. Just one more. Thank you. [INAUDIBLE]. I can hear you. I think you can hear me. 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 Is everybody gonna agree on everything? No, but no. And I will tell you the truth. I had that impression a lot of the last time. I'll tell you something, I'll do it. I don't have no big degree. If I can, I just got a high-stu education. Worked my flat head every year, got jobs for it. And I'm just way sure, I'm sure Shannon White's a dog shit. And this may not be appropriate, Sheriff, to do this. I said some stuff, and did her, I know. But at that time, I thought I was right. I might have stood here, wouldn't be safe. I didn't realize what I was gonna do. I saw a lot of work, and I learned that. Kind of a little affirmation. Shannon, I don't know if she's sure or not. I hopefully apologize to you. If you could support me, it'd be good. If you don't, you're no heartfelt, you learn to get mad over nothing when it comes down to that. I believe in doing what's right and voting what I think's right, not what else wants me to go against. I support it, I enjoy it, I've learned a lot. And if I'm fortunate enough to get back to you, I hope I work some more. And I thank you guys. Mr. Aka, for the occasion of the first district. I don't know much about Dave, but I think he has a good dad. I know nobody. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Like I say, thank you for letting me here before you could speak. Most of you know me, I had a chance to work with you in my capacity at the Sheriff's Department through Budget, and when this position first came open, the first thing when I was asked if I was interested, I'd say I had to go home and ask my wife. And I think I have the support of both her and the good Lord. Public service has always been dear to my heart. I'm a member of the Sheriff's Department for thirty-four years, and serving my community is what I know best. I have worked closely with you in Budget, in Commission, and some of the committee meetings, and there's not a group of people I respect more than this group out here. And I know whatever decision you make tonight will be the right one. Until that, I have enough experience with law enforcement and serving the public that I could be of benefit to this commission through the issues that you face now and the ones that will come in the future. Any consideration you can give me, I do really appreciate it.
On Lawrence Street, I'm the [INAUDIBLE] District One. Dr. Aka, sir, before I answer your questions, I've got one or a couple of little things to make you aware of, all of these. In my early years, I worked, started off at Mountain View Correctional Institution as an officer, and I was promoted to sergeant, and I was next in line for lieutenant. So I understand what the sheriff has to deal with as far as dealing with housing inmates. We had both state and federal inmates. We also had inmates that was pre-aliency, wedding penalty charges. And after that, I moved to Florida, and I lived down there for a while, and I took the last of my savings and I become a licensed Florida Home Inspector for both residential and commercial. So I think I'd be really good on buildings and grounds because I know it's just structurally stable. I have all the credentials as far as that goes. Now to answer the true question that Dr. Aka wants to know, I've been very critical of a lot of you for a lot of reasons, mainly because I care. Not just about District One, I care about the whole entire county. I care about their tax bill because it matters. I don't believe in spending money you don't have, and I don't believe in spending on stuff that you don't need. Every tax dollar in this county, everybody that pays property taxes is very important. What I would like to help change, if I'm permitted to sit in that seat, is this county needs total 100% transparency. If you have that, you don't have people sitting out here complaining. A lot of times they're here complaining because they don't quite understand what's going on, and they feel like they've been wronged. That may not always be the case. It may not never be the case, but that's how they feel. Their feelings matter. Every person in this county should matter to every other person in this county. All have things.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you can take your seats back, but as you go, I just wanna thank you for your willingness to serve. We have not had this happen before, and it is difficult to choose between you, I think any one of you, who made a good commissioner. Some of the hardest things we have to do as commissioners is vote on things like vacancies and, you know, to keep remaining and kind of vote for people on committees, things like that. Those are some of the hardest odds that we have. So please know that we don't hate this lightly. And now at this time, the floor is open for nominations.
Sheriff, may I make one more comment? I would like to inform the commission that Shannon White, who also applied for this position, would want to attend.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone wish to make a nomination?
I nominate Lawrence Street.
Okay, thank you. I nominate Lawrence.[1170.12]
Thank you all so much. I say thank you for letting me here before you can speak. Most of you know me, had a chance to work with you in my capacity at the Sheriff's Department through budget and when his position first came open, the first thing when I was asked if I was interested, I'd say I have to go home and ask my wife. And I think I have the support of both her and the good Lord. Public service has always been dear to my heart. I'm a member of the Sheriff's Department for 34 years and serving my community is what I know best. I have worked closely with you in budget and commission and some of the committee meetings and there's not a group of people I respect more than this group out here. And I know whatever decision you make tonight will be the right one. Until that, I have enough experience with law enforcement and serving the public that I could be of benefit to this commission through the issues that you face now and the ones that will come in the future and any consideration you can give me, I do very appreciate it.
Lawrence Street of the possible office of District One. Dr. Akuff, sir, before I answer your questions, I've got one of a couple of little things to make you aware of. All of these, in my, in my early years, I worked as, started off at Mountain View Correctional Institution as an officer and I was promoted to sergeant and I was next in line for lieutenant. So I understand what the sheriff has to deal with as far as dealing with housing inmates. We had both state and federal inmates. We also had inmates that was pre-aliency, wedding penalty charges. And after that, I moved to Florida and I lived down there for a while and I took the last of my savings and I become a licensed Florida Home Inspector for both residential and commercial. So I think I'd be really good on buildings and grounds because I know it's just structurally stable. I have all the credentials as far as that goes. Now to answer the true question that Dr. Akuff wants to know, I've been very critical of a lot of them for a lot of reasons, mainly because I care. Not just about District One, I care about the whole entire county. I care about their tax bill because it matters. I don't believe in spending money you don't have and I don't believe in spending on stuff that you don't need. Every tax dollar in this county, everybody that pays property taxes is very important. What I would like to help change, if I'm permitted to say in that seat, is I, this county needs total 100% transparency. If you have that, you don't have people sitting out here complaining. A lot of times they're here complaining because they don't quite understand what's going on and they feel like they've been wronged. That may not always be the case. It may not never be the case, but that's how they feel. Their feelings matter. Every person in this county should matter to every other person in this county. All I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, you know, and you can take your seats back, but as you go, I just want to thank you for your willingness to serve. We have not had this happen before and it is difficult to choose between you, I think any one of you who made a good commissioner. Some of the hardest things we have to do as commissioners is vote on things like vacancies and, you know, to keep remaining and kind of vote for our people on committees and things like that. Those are some of the hardest spots that we have. So please know that we don't hate this lightly. And now at this time, the floor is open for nominations.
Sheriff, may I make one more comment? I would like to inform the commission that Shannon White, who also applied for this position, would want to attend.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone wish to make a nomination?
I nominate Lawrence Street.
Okay, thank you. You nominate Lawrence Street.
I nominate David Nichols.
Do you have nominations?
Yes, ma'am. I nominate Mark Levens.
Okay.
Is there going to be a nomination?
Thank you. Anybody else? Just to be honest.
Can you read who's been nominated?
Mark Levens, Lawrence Street, and David Nichols.
Nominate Keith Range.
Okay. Keith Range.
It's the field.
Are there any other nominations? All right, I'm going to see some nominations and we will be voting on one of these four candidates that has been nominated. We will have to do a voice vote. We don't have the capability by our devices to do this. So when the first officer calls your name, please say one of the candidates. So he will either say Levens or Mark Levens, Street or Lawrence Street, Nichols or David Nichols, or Range or Keith Range. Does anyone have a question before voting? Now, first officer, when you're ready. Hillary.
Nichols.
Dr. Akuff.
Nichols.
Nancy Brown, Levens. Avery Nguyen.
Levens.
Julie Nguyen, Levens. Bradley Johnson.
Nichols.
Just to clarify, was that Nichols?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Burrow.
Nichols.
Angie Odom.
Street.
Danny Deal.
Street.
Gary Kemp.
Range.
Jerry Prophet.
Levens.
Lisa Childers.
Street.
Ginger Holder.
Levens.
Charlene Thomas.
Nichols.
Johnny Cable.
Range.
Jason Clausen.
Range.
Todd Smith.
Range.
Carol Whaley.
Nichols.
Leslie Hughes.
Range.
Erin Fraser.
Levens.
Jerry Stale.
Levens.
Kelly Collins.
Range.
She said range. Just one more.
All right, the official count is Levens, seven, Street, three, Nichols, six, Range, six. So at this time, we, we will vote on the top three vote getters. So now you're voting between Levens, Nickel, and Range. Levens, Nichols, and Range.
Holder.
Nichols.
Dr. Akuff.
Nichols.
Nancy Brown, Levens. Avery Nguyen. Julie Nguyen, Levens. Bradley Johnson.
Nichols.
Steve Burrow.
Nichols.
Angie Odom.
Nichols.
Danny Deal.
Nichols.
Gary Kemp.
Range.
Jerry Prophet.
Levens.
Lisa Childers.
Range.
Ginger Holder.
Levens.
Charlene Thomas.
Nichols.
Johnny Cable.
Range.
Jason Clausen.
Range.
Todd Smith.
Range.
Carol Whaley.
Nichols.
Leslie Hughes.
Range.
Erin Fraser.
Levens.
Jerry Stale.
Range.
Kelly Collins.
Range.
She said range.
All right, so the official counts on that round was Levens, six, Nichols, eight, Range, eight. So on this final round, uh, well, could, it might not be the final round, but we need, we need 12 votes for one candidate or the other. If we don't get 12, we continue voting until we get 12. Okay, so this time, you're voting Nichols or Range? Nichols or Range? First officer, when you're ready.
Angie Holder.
Nichols.
Dr. Akuff.
Nichols.
Nancy Brown.
Range.
Avery Nguyen.
Nichols.
Julie Nguyen.
Range.
Bradley Johnson.
Nichols.
Steve Burrow.
Nichols.
Angie Odom.
Nichols.
Danny Deal.
Nichols.
Gary Kemp.
Range.
Jerry Prophet.
Range.
Lisa Childers.
Range.
Ginger Holder.
Nichols.
Charlene Thomas.
Nichols.
Johnny Cable.
Range.
Jason Clausen.
Range.
Todd Smith.
Range.
Carol Whaley.
Nichols.
Leslie Hughes.
Range.
Erin Fraser.
Range.
Jerry Stale.
Range.
Kelly Collins.
Range.
The official tally, Nichols, 10, Range, 12. Vote for the mountain, so Keith Range, welcome, being a part of our competition. Oh, okay. All right, so we will pause right here briefly so that Mayor Whitby can swear Keith Range in. This is a, this is a joint effort, just let me tell you. I'm not. I, Keith Range, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Keith Range, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Tennessee.
And the state of Tennessee.
I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties.
I will faithfully and honor discharge the duties.
As the Office of County Commissioner.
As the Office of County Commissioner.
The best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
That I will faithfully demean myself as such in the performance.
I will faithfully demean myself in such the performance.
Of the duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
Which I do hereby assume.
Which I do hereby assume.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Commissioner Range has been attending a lot of meetings lately. I feel that he is a lot of the thankful people he called this evening. But if you do not feel comfortable, feel free to abstain this evening. But, but we do, we've seen you here, we know that, we know that. So vote him over and thank you for your willingness.
Thank you.
And again, thank you to every other person that was willing to serve.
Keith, you don't have to say that. You don't have to say next to him.
Um, if y'all will let us get through one more item and I'm going to call on Attorney Harden for item 12, the State District Consul Vacance.
Okay, um, as far as this vacancy, I'm aware of one applicant, Ronald Ritchie, who has turned in the affidavit required by state law in certifying he meets qualifications. However, uh, state law also requires that the applicant file with the clerk, in this instance, a letter from a psychologist licensed in his state, a cognitive and psychological test stating he is mentally and cognitively fit to perform the duties of consul. So if you'll that later is turned in, which to my knowledge it has not been, uh, this gentleman is not eligible for. And I'm not aware of any other actions.
I'll make a motion to defer that. So, well, let's let the clerk get that motion out there directly. So the motion is to defer filling this consul vacancy until we can defer another advertising or a T O P. Um, Mr. Ronald Ritchie can provide the other documents stated.
Thanks, Ellen.
Motion was signed by Julie Nguyen. Avery Nguyen. Are there any questions? Okay, we are voting whether or not to defer the State District Consul Vacance. Please vote.
Jerry Prophet.
Yes.
Danny Deal.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion has passed and we will continue to advertise our position. All right, at this time.
Yes, sir. This Range has not been added?
Yeah, we need to add Keith Range. So he currently has voted on the last. He'll be ready to vote when we get back from the break. We are going to take a break now. I ask you to please keep this one as short as you can. We still have special guests in the room waiting to be presented. So let's see, uh, very hard to send off very long. All right.
Absolutely. Yes, I saw that you did. Okay, good deal. You got on another pretty topic. The usual. Okay. Okay, okay. Yeah, there was only a couple. Okay. All right, commissioners, can you come back to order, please? Jerry Prophet.
All right, if we can come back to order, please. Can you start it again?
All right, let's come back to order. We are on item number thirteen, which is an appointment of the County Commission Liaison to the Chamber of Commerce Board. The floor is open for questions. If you have any or nominations.
That's my mate, Avery Wynn.
Okay, question is made, well nomination is made for Avery Wynn. We don't need seconds on nominations. Is there any other nomination? Okay, then I think Erin knows what question I'm looking for.
I'm making a motion that we cease nominations and elect by acclamation.
Okay, so Erin made a motion to cease nominations and elect acclamation. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Angie Odom, since she's already in the computer. Okay, Angie Odom's second to that motion. Any questions or need for comments? Okay, so Commissioners, you are voting to approve Avery Wynn as our County Commission Liaison to the Chamber of Commerce Board.
That's our vote.
To the Prophet.
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
All right, Avery, raise another dog today, please. Okay. All right, item number fourteen is an education update from Dr. Brandon Mertesacker, Director of Schools.
I'm trying to be short. I just wanted to, I think there've been some questions about FEMA projects and kind of where we stand as a school system on that. Of course, our board decided not to use a consultant. They kind of turned that over to myself and Ms. Amanda Scow, our financial liaison. So we have fourteen projects in total. As we stand, three of those have been obligated. Four are pending, two are actuals. One, the board is still deciding if we're doing alternate project on that. And then we have four in the CRC. The four that are in the CRC are actually much further along than that. But what we did as a school system was, as this progressed, it was much smarter on the financial side to send those back through and put our sewer system as its own project, because it was a significant financial thing. As we go through, I'll tell you where those are at. If you've got any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer those. The first one, and I'll say these project numbers unless somebody can know, I'll just tell you whether the sewer treatment plant that goes with Hampton High School, that is in the CRC. The stadium that goes in with Hampton High School CRC, professional CRC, and the actual Hampton High School campus is in the CRC. All of those are in the CRC just because we elected to put that sewer system as its own project. So those will move rapidly depending, just in the next, maybe, this was from the tenth of July, so it may actually be to that step now. I'll know that. I usually meet with them on Thursday. One of the projects, the fifth project is a drive-by car. That is in the pending. It's basically just waiting on a signature from the head of Homeland Security. We had the school supplies, which is a hundred percent reimbursement, is obligated. We had damage at Kingburg Hunter and Hampton. All those were grouped into one project. That has been obligated. The one that the board is kind of, we're still doing some consideration and we're looking at some options on that with the Old Duffield Academy. The old bus garage was used as an alternate project, so what we're going to do is take the money from the old bus garage and use that on a project that we have in our system. Protective majors and supplies at the temporary school, that was the cost to set up Hampton High School. And there's some costs to go with the sewer system there that's reimbursed because it's for, the reason we closed Kingburg, a lot of that was the sewer system would not handle three hundred, and that's what it's doing now, so we have to treat that. That cost is obligated. Supplies for temporary school, that is pending. That should be, it's probably, actually, that was probably obligated by now. Happy Valley Middle School and High School, there were some major roofing projects and all that, and what we chose to do on that are actuals. We had to get those fixed. So what we'll do is, once those are fixed, we'll turn in what we've paid and then they'll reimburse us the percentage for that. And then United Elementary, that is a project that we're looking at just to see if we want to proceed with that or if we want to use that as an alternate project as well. So that's kind of the breakdown of where we're at. As far as Hampton High School, I know that's the thing that we get the most calls about. But that project is, we hired a construction management team, and it's Burleson Construction. And if you know anything about construction, they're one of the premier in the area. And I think the board was very wise to do so. They're at the point, a lot of what they're doing now is everything that's behind the scenes. So there's lots of work that's going on with mitigation and the sewer part. Those are the two things that will take time, as far as they explain it to me. Once that project is started, there will be multiple things going on at one time. And as of last week, they said that the timeline was still in place to have those kids back in school on January first. So everything's kind of on track as far as that project goes. I think that, I don't know that they did it today, but they're trying to get out a bid package for the demolition this week. They may have did it today, I don't know. But I spoke to them this morning, and that's the part where they're at. Once they get that bid package out, and the commission's bid out, they will start what the commission needs to be done. That's kind of where, when I've got a few other questions about any of that.
I appreciate the update on the physical buildings, but what about teachers? We got all we need for coming year. You got good teachers.
We've been very fortunate that I'm surrounded by staff who's very good at earning grants, doing things and making the most of what we have. I feel like that we do a good job of that. You know, and one thing that brought my attention, just in the past year, we brought thirty-six grant-funded jobs in Carter County that pay an average of fifty thousand dollars. You know, that's grant-funded. You know, most of them's good for two years, some of them's good for four. That's still, you know, things that, and lots of times a two-year grant turns into a ten-year. You just never know. But I feel very blessed to have people around here do a good job of that. Sheriff's Department's really good to work with us, and the constables that were here. You guys were recognizing the constables in the sheriff's department. I just thought back to my first month, and I was Sheriff Frey, and at the time, we had about five SROs, I think. And I guess everybody here knows, at that time, there was a little rift, I think, for some reason, between the sheriff's department and the constables. But they worked together. We didn't go one day, not one day, we didn't have either a constable or SRO. So that kind of set the tone for success for all the, every party, so I do appreciate those. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to.
I know that most of us had a chance to look at the breakdown that we received as far as the estimate goes of Hampton High School and what's going to be done where. I have a question about retaining wall. Is that going to be included on the grounds or is that going to be a separate project to place a retaining wall behind the school?
That's a mitigation project. And that is something that's actually taking some time because, like we said, Burleson is, I mean, their reputation is high. And they're trying to make sure this is done right. You know, that was a big thing for the board and myself, was to make sure that we did this thing right. And that's where we're at on that. I know there's a little bit of a, and I don't know the hens and hounds, but they're deciding on the T-Deck side if it's going to be happening in Nashville or some perimeter office for the Johnson City. So that's kind of where we're at. But that is definitely in the works and a big part of the project.
What about enrollment this year? Have we lost a lot because the plan has a lot relocated or?
We really just have preliminary numbers. It looks like we're going to be maybe even above what we were. So I don't know that for sure until we actually see, get to see. Sometimes that can be misleading, I would say, you know, here's the road. But I think we'll be closer than we're to what we ended because that initial rush is what you're going to lose. Now that things are getting back to normal and we can get, especially when we get kids back in school, their home schools, I think we'll see a lot of those kids that even left come back.
I was worried about the vouchers. I mean, was that going to make a difference?
That's definitely, you know, homeschool is what really makes the difference for us right now. It's real easy to disagree with somebody and just pour your kids out. You know, that's what we see a lot. But that being said, most of the time, they come back. Most of the time, once you lose that kid for, you know, a few months and people realize, hey, maybe, maybe, you know, they were just doing what had to be done, and those will come back. So hopefully, that the vouchers don't hurt us, like it does in other parts per se.
I've seen where Washington County have lost their food, the free food throughout their system. Have you heard of Carter County's going to have the free one?
Our board's committed to do things.
Yes, sir. Okay, could you give us a figure as how much that FEMA has wanted to contribute to this? Of, say, the Hampton High School project, I live at Hampton.
Well, the project was the same as what the board was, twelve million, and it's seventy-five percent of that, twelve and a half for the state, so.
So.
I think it's ten.
I think in the last, that'll be about a month ago, I looked at the figure for twenty-one. And there, she said that that was for all the schools in Carter County. Is that correct?
For FEMA, no, no, I'm sorry.
We don't know what we'll get there.
Yes, we'll get eighty-seven and a half percent of twelve, six million roughly. And that's for Hampton High School. Then some of the others, like the projects, I can just estimate. I don't have that amount here, but I can estimate each one of them if you'd like me to do that.
Well, I would love to meet with you and kind of get some figures and write over what I understand.
Okay.
You know, my name is Michael Floss, and I was understanding that we received, the county received twenty-one billion dollars for FEMA. I was also under the understanding that we don't have any insurance on any schools. Is that correct?
We've had insurance on every school. Even Hampton High School has insurance. It's just that what happened was just like homes. A flood is very, is usually not covered unless you have specific insurance.
So we don't have flood insurance on any of the students? We do not have flood insurance on any?
No, not, not, not on our schools as of now.
That's what I.
Hampton High School will have flood insurance.
But they did have flood insurance in ninety-eight, is that correct? We'll pay to request them, you know, for it after the fact.
Actually, the insurance company. But it was, it was a, basically, when I come to the insurance company, then after the flood, it was a, you know, we don't cover that again.
Excuse me for interjecting. Dr. Parker, we have a Commissioner in the office, Tracer Hanson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I'm going to say, you know, just her and maybe one other Commissioner, and they won't let Dr. Parker sit down, if you don't mind.
I just want to confirm.
In other elections, they mightn't be allowed to ask.
I'm sure you can arrange a meeting with Dr. Parker.
You can come anytime, or you can come to another board meeting. You know, I know you've been in the workforce and you have done the major.
Hey, Dr. Parker, I just want to confirm, you said the students are expected to be back, you said January of twenty-twenty-six?
Now, the whole, the whole project will not be finished at that time, but the actual school building and the infrastructure will be, so that's.
So Hampton High School students should be back. That's amazing. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Talking about the insurance on Hampton High School, did it have flood insurance?
Had the same coverage that we had in nineteen ninety-eight when it was covered.
But it flooded in ninety-eight. Are you not required by the Fed to have flood insurance in FEMA floods on?
I was, I, I, I can't answer that question for you because I wasn't there.
Being that flooded in ninety-eight, why are you not looking for a flood in any possible year?
We are. That's the reason why.
You're still not carrying a flood agent?
Yes, we're going to carry.
You are now.
Yes.
But you didn't during the flood. Is that correct in saying that FEMA paid, helped pay for the last flood in ninety-eight?
I don't know if FEMA paid for the, the insurance paid in ninety-eight.
Did FEMA pay anything this year?
In ninety-eight, the damage was minimal.
Did FEMA pay for anything this year?
For anything what?
This year.
Yeah, I mean, just what I just went over.
FEMA hasn't paid anything on the school for a flood insurance or what have you. That means it probably paid something in ninety-eight.
It is, they are going to pay. These projects have to go through the process. Hampton High School has to go through that process. That's the CRC. And they go through the process, you know, they committed to pay. It's just you have to mean that, you have to go through the steps before.
I don't understand why the school board did not purchase flood insurance for Hampton High School after the ninety-eight flood. You almost have to know this is going to be another flood.
And here's the thing, even if you have flood insurance, flood insurance covers the first million dollars. After that first million dollars is to FEMA. The only, the only reason you have flood insurance on something in that case, just like you will any of these county buildings that you get, would be to satisfy that requirement for FEMA so that the next time, they will cover again. Does that make sense? If you don't have it, they won't cover again. If you have it, and something happens, as long as you have coverage, then they step in and they pick up what's new. If that makes sense.
So, Dr. Parker, thank you for agreeing to come to that. I appreciate it very, very much. And if any Commissioner.
I had to question. I asked him. I'm the one to ask him to come. I wanted to get an update on the Hunter project.
Okay, it is actually, phase one is complete. The back, that's the six-eight wing with the gymnasium and the new stack, parent stacked access in the back. That should keep a lot of the traffic off of the highway that's always been a major problem when I was principal there. So that part's complete. We're on phase two, and that is an updated remodel of the existing building, which that is to be finished, we're pushing, hopefully, next week. And that's the main area when you go in the school, the existing school. The gymnasium, the old gym, if you're familiar with the layout, is going to be a special-ed wing. So that will be finished in November. And then at that time, the entire project, existing project will be finished, and at some time we'll get a cafeteria, new cafeteria. time before we get a cafeteria, new cafeteria. Once we move those portals out, get that area straightened out.
What is the CRC?
Solidated Resource Center. Solidated Resource Center.
Okay.
Dr. Parker, thank you so much for being gracious and agreeing and answering all these questions. And I would just encourage anybody who did not get their questions answered this evening, please reach out again individually or in school board meetings because they, they're dedicated to talking about this stuff all evening in their meetings and we've got other business to discuss here tonight. So please handle it appropriately and thank you, Dr. Parker.
It'd be like a Huddersfield, 13 hours.
All right. We are on item number 15, the financial director report.
Evening. Just to let you know, your reports as normal are in your packet. I will caution you that June reports, this is the end of fiscal year, so what you have in your package is not the way they will end in the next 60 days. So just keep that in mind as you look through those, the adjustments, year end approvals, things of that nature have not been put into votes. Those will be working on for the next 30 to 45 days. The minutes and all the information from FMC and budget committee are also in your packet. For anyone who doesn't know or doesn't recall, the budget was passed and has been submitted to the state. We should have response from that sometime in hopefully mid-August. There were about 51 counties and municipalities ahead of us when I submitted that budget the week after the committee. Other than that, the only other update I have is we are working on the rapid funded projects. Those have been submitted to FEMA about three weeks ago. We've answered all those questions. I'd hope to have an update today as to when we would receive that first million dollars worth of funding. I did not get that because the person who has that answer is out in the office. So hopefully I will have that in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you. So we've already taken here about 16, we're down to item 17, which is the communication property update. And Mark Rides has submitted, if you'd like, so if you'll come in at your convenience.
Stand off to the side. But Kate Stillwell, she was our PM. We're transferring PMs and I'll let her explain a little bit more about that, but we'll get started with the project update.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I feel very privileged to be here tonight. You guys have actually inspired me to run for some type of council out of Rutherford County, so I'm going to have to see what they've got going on. I really do need to stand up here, don't I, Kate?
Can you use a microphone, please? That'd be helpful.
I'll be back.
Is this better? Oh, I'm normally laughing anyway. So my name is Kate Stillwell. I am out of Rutherford County for the state. I'm the program director for Motorola Solutions and I oversee the state of Tennessee. I work directly with TACAN, which is the Tennessee Advanced Communications Network. So I've been working with them for the past eight years and I've got a team of PMs that that come out here and do a lot of work for us. Anytime I get an opportunity to come out to Carter County, I do say, and I set it up publicly, Carter County is really one of my favorite counties. I get kind of deflated once I go back to Rutherford, there's not as many hills and a couple of them outside. So thank you for having us over here. I do have a couple of colleagues with me as well, so if you kind of see me look to the right, that means I'm asking for some input on this. So in the essence of time, I think we've got about 24 slides. I'm not going to go through in depth, I'm not 24 slides here, but I do at least want to touch some of the high points. So this project for, I was going to say Rutherford County, this project for Carter County was sold about two and a half years ago. There's, most of the people in here are probably sitting here thinking, well, you know, the money's been locked up. What are we doing? Where are we at? So when we started this initially right out the gate, we have a team that comes out, they assess the different locations, which I'll talk about in a second. But I do want to hold focused on what's been completed and what our next steps are and where we're going. We were held up right out the gate by US Forestry. Forestry said, hey, nice to meet you guys, but we're going to go ahead and put a hold on you for the next 18 months. A lot of red tape, we worked with lobbyists. I know the mayor has been very instrumental working with Senator Blackburn to get things moving because this is a really critical piece of the state in order to get the surrounding counties and other folks on board for public safety. So I did want to talk about, again, a little bit of background, the simulcast, TACAN contribution. I, I meet with TACAN several times a week, right up through their commissioner and also governor lead to give out the status across all counties that we've got coming on board. The coverage, what are you guys actually getting for the money that's being spent on Motorola? Site build status and certainly next steps and then a preliminary project schedule, I use that term very loosely, is really to talk about construction and then we'll be back here in the next couple of weeks to provide the actual blown out schedule. That, that new, that new job, thank you. So not going to mention everybody here, everybody will get a copy of the slide deck. Mark's going to send it out after this meeting, so everybody can go through if there's any questions, just, just let me know on that. So we've got the, the PM, we've got civil site design, we've got our sales team and we've got our services team as well. That you guys will see throughout the project duration on this right here. Of course, we've got Mark Rides, who is my direct point of contact for Carter County. Jeff Gray is the TACAN director for the state. And then Chuck Rushing may be a new name to some of you. He came on board about eight months ago, deputy director of field operations. You'll see him out on site a lot, working with their own state of Tennessee technicians that will be on site working hand in hand with Motorola. So again, not, not really getting too deep into this, but what was sold is going to be a background in this. We didn't officially kick this project off until April of this year. That's how long it's been. That's the, that's the holdup with, with US Forestry and trying to get through this. So Carter County system is going to go ahead and join TACAN. What you guys are purchasing on this is going to be two simulcast cell and radio systems. We're also looping in Avery, North Carolina. That has changed since it's been sold as well. We were working directly with Viper, which is their state system on the North Carolina side. And of course, and then we had Hurricane Helene came through and kind of expedited a couple of things on our side. So you guys are going to be getting the Astro 25 simulcast subsites, each with six 800 megahertz channels. But here's the key part is the second bullet. You guys are going to contribute coverage from Stone Mountain, Johnson County and Buffalo Mountain, TACAN and Johnson City. White Rock, which is very remote, beautiful once you get up there and say your prayers as you're going up on the, on the side by side, absolutely beautiful area up there. So that was the one that's been holding us up from US Forestry from, from proceeding. Without White Rock, it's going to be very, very difficult to get coverage on these other locations. So Avery, North Carolina site is very critical to us as well. We've had to work with them very closely, get the MOUs in place and actually bring them on to the, to the state of Tennessee, coverage on that as well. So the folks impacted on the local agencies are certainly going to be law enforcement, fire, emergency management with regards to mobiles and portables as well. So you guys are getting a lot of stuff. Next generation D series stations. I do want to note on this, because of the delay on getting this out, when the project was initially sold, it was sold with a, a different type of equipment. Motorola upgrades just as quickly as Apple and Google do, right? They're constantly bringing out new stuff. Motorola apps actually absorb the cost on going from a G to the D series. So we did not come back to Carter County and say, hey, you owe us another 500,000 because the equipment came out. So this is all new relevant, relevant equipment and stuff that's going to be going in as well. Microwave is going to be done by one of our partners, which is Aviat. And then TACAN's committed, and we'll get into it in a second, is going to be able to support the art and infrastructure equipment as well. So White Rock, again, this is very, very key, very remote. This is a snapshot timeline because there's other slides that are going to follow on this that you guys can read at your own leisure on this. So White Rock is a new site that requires a tower shelter equipment. It's very expensive. It's going to buy tons of carriages to get moving. Sold in 2022, 17 month delay to the forestry not allowing access. Here's what started happening and I was begging Mark and I said, if we could please get access into the site up at White Rock to start the architectural and engineering phase. Forestry really locked us out and it took until April of 2024 to get permission from forestry to gain access. I did not charge Carter County. It was a risk on Motorola's side. It did not pass historical and environmental for the, for the state and, and federal side. Motorola would have eaten the cost on that. Everything did pass. It was cleared. It was great. We were excited. We thought we were moving forward and forestry shut us down again. So this is why it's taken so long to get where we're at today. Again, Mayor Woodby, thank you for your support on engaging Senator Blackburn and having her out here as we were working with our lobbyists out of DC as well. And then again, officially kicked off in April of this year. Not going to go in depth on this. Again, you can look at it, but all of the green, this is going to be your outbound coverage. That means this is dispatch to subscriber. So this is dispatch coming out. This is what you guys are expected to receive for outbound coverage. Inbound system coverage, this is a subscriber out in the field, back to dispatch. Some of the white areas that are kind of between Elizabethan and, and White Rock Tower, yeah, that's it. Some of this is some of the mountain as well that you just can't penetrate through some of that, but it's going to be a whole lot better than what you guys have today. So again, I presented this at the CDR back in April. This is a major commitment and partnership from TACAN. They're getting almost 1.1 million commitment in. They asked, you know, what's the status? We just briefed the director on this last Friday. They didn't know that we were coming out here to give an update as well. So this is just stating what County has signed up for and what the state has signed up for. Okay, again, this is just, this is just a continued edition on now, so you guys can take a look at this. So who bought what for the remaining sites? So a lot has gone on, right? So we've got several sites that are brought in by this sale of Carter County. Holston Mountain is one. This is an existing site. Stone Mountain is existing. Carter County 911 and then Buffalo Mountain is also existing. There's, you can see it's almost equal commitment between the state and the county. So it's very, very important that, that the state support what these surrounding counties are also doing. So this is across the entire state. Okay, this is a snapshot again of what your microwave overview is going to look like. So White Rock, the reason it is so critical is it's going to become a prime site. That's very, very critical. And you can see on the star, everything that's going to be touching on White Rock. So there's going to be connecting to Elizabethan, Buffalo Mountain, Avery, North Carolina, Stone Mountain, very, very critical that we get moving on White Rock. So let me see what else. Okay, so the civil overview, when people spend a lot of money, counties or state or federal, and they don't see a lot of movement, they're like, we've just wasted all of our time. What is Motorola doing this time? There is so much that happens behind the scenes in order to get us to where the shovel is physically in the ground. It is a minimum of a six month duration for site surveys, lease exhibits, everything that's noted down here from site survey down to approval, all of that was done at Motorola's risk expense, trying to get around forestry. Trying to, trying to move things a lot quicker. So as we start kicking this off since the CDR, when we met in April, all of this stuff is completed. Yay for us. So otherwise we would be held up for another six months trying to get this moved. We have ARPA funding that's attached to this, right? The expiration date on those is December of 2026. We just simply have run out of runway if we were to wait an additional six months. And that's part of what I was trying to drive on Motorola's side. So trying to get my leadership to approve, to spend money on a project that may or may not go, I won. But we got there. So this is, this is where we're at today with this. So White Rock, again, if anybody gets an opportunity to go up to White Rock, White Rock, the only thing that could prevent us from getting White Rock done right now, and again, I have to give a shout out to the mayor on this, it has to do with the, the access road up to this remote site is in a, it's bad condition. It's going to take, and I know she's already working on it, they're getting ready to do a bid out, I think it's within the next, next week or so you guys are working on this.
We're working on it right now, trying to finalize it.
So the road is very, very critical to, to get access to. And I'm going to show you another picture here because when people think of a shelter, they think about a sheet shed, right? Something they can just pop in your backyard or throw your tools in or, you know, ladies can sit back there and have wine and this stuff. That's not what we're talking about for Carter County. Okay, I'll, I'll show you a picture of that shed here in just a second. The approval, so where are we going right now with White, with White Rock? So from March 2025, from US Forestry, they finally approved us for the land usage. Yay, two and a half years later, they finally approved us. And that's because everybody was coming after them and trying to get this specifically up in DC. Site equipment list, tons of equipment are going up to White Rock specifically. You're also going to get a 12 by 26 shelter and a new 190 foot tower that's going to go. D series, primesite shelter equipment, all of that stuff has been ordered. We, we placed order on it when we met last time in April. It takes a minute for Motorola to crank some of this equipment out and it has to do with priority. Where does Carter County sit? Are we moving forward with County, Carter County? Yes, yes, and yes. So all of that equipment is ordered, it's going to shift the end of third quarter, which is going to be the end of September for us. And we're going to be sitting waiting on it as we get underway with construction on this. Road access is going to be key. If we do not get that road expanded and reinforced to take in an 88,000 ton shelter, we're dead in the water. And what I'm focused on most is going to be the ARPA funding deadline for December of 2026. So the RFP again is in process of highway spec. The challenge for us specifically on this road, it crosses Appalachian Trail twice. Pretty remote up there as well. So that's one of the main reasons US Forestry kept on kicking us back. Appalachian Trail, Appalachian Trail. I actually started to start hiking the Appalachian Trail. Pretty remote up there, but we, it took a while, it took a lot of people to get this So the remaining work at, at White Rock, because remember we did all of this work last year, not really sure if this was going to move forward or not. So a geotechnical is being done. US Forestry came back and said, hey, we really need to get, we need to have a land disturbance completed so we can actually issue a permit out to you guys, Motorola, so we can move forward. Didn't expect a geo specifically for that site. Our folks are on, on site this week to complete the geotech. Takes a couple of weeks to come back. What that's going to say is, hey, this is what the soil looks like up here at White Rock. Motorola, you are clear to move forward. Remember, we already have the historical is cleared and more importantly, the environmental is clear. That means there's no Indian warheads or dead burial site, any of that stuff sitting out there. It's always a concern, specifically in Northeast Tennessee, a lot of old Indian burial grounds that we have on across them. It's like running across a bald eagle and everything is shut down for a couple of years. So the county right now has done enough grading to allow a, to allow a four by four truck to come. I've been on that truck. It's very, very scary. I actually went with him. He told me to buckle in. I was in the backseat and I just shut my eyes. It's very, very important again, what this site is, there's a lot that has to come together to make this work, not only for Motorola, certainly for Carter, Carter County to get this done. So once we complete the geotechnical, the ask from US Forestry again is saying, hey, listen, here's your permit, we're clear to go and then we are absolutely underway. It also clears the way for Carter County to get that road cleared as well, right? I'm not going to go all into this. There's a lot that has to be done on the background in order to continue to move forward. On the contract, there is responsibility for Carter County, right? We're clear to go, and then we are absolutely underway. It also clears the way for Carter County to get that road cleared as well, right? I'm not going to go all into this. There's a lot that has to be done on the background in order to continue to move forward. On the contract, there is responsibility for Carter County, right? So they have to get MOUs signed. They have to get usage limitations completed with Johnson County. There's a lot of partnership between the adjacent counties. Most people, I would say probably 98%, are very, very happy and excited for Carter County to come on. Your neighbor in Elizabethan, one of the things I would highly recommend, and I think when we get to the picture next, this picture right here, 88,000 pounds of building. This is the shelter that Carter County is going to be getting. It withstands 150-mile wind speed rate. It withstands ice at 400-foot elevation. It's bullet resistant, believe it or not. We get people that shoot at our towers and our shelters. And it's 32, well, it's got ammunition. You got really deep in the ammunition piece of that.
That was genius. I appreciate it.
So this is real, real critical. So when we are asking to have the road reinforced to get this up, I would absolutely suggest a field trip for anybody who's interested next week. Elizabethan is getting their shelter moved up a very, very large hill at a grade of about 45%. It is, it requires very specific equipment to come in to move this. It has put us on hold for about three months. Elizabethan was not happy, but they figured if they threw some gravel down there or kind of did this and didn't widen it enough. The specifics to get this shelter up, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to see it next week. We've got people that will be on site to take some pictures. If you really want to see the reinforcements of these shelters, I will be sure to send the specific date on when they're going to be on site. I would also encourage anybody who's interested, VFP, who manufactures our shelters, are located right across the border in Duffield, Virginia. If anybody's interested in a field trip, Motorola can certainly set it up. It's amazing to watch the production as they crank these out and very specific. So any, any questions on the shelter? Again, this is not a she-shit in somebody's backyard. This is, this is massive.
There's, there's two doors on it. The large door is for the generator. Generator is going to be stored inside as well as fuel tank. And then the, basically two-thirds of the other end will be with air conditioning and conditioning and also radios and all that equipment will be in there.
That's pretty amazing. Okay, not going to go into a lot. Avery, North Carolina has been a wonderful partner with Motorola and certainly with Carter County on this as well. This is one of the sites that are going to be coming on and, and supporting the state of Tennessee on this. And I'll let everybody kind of walk through this and you can take a look at it as we send the information out. Stone Mountain, another contributing TACAN RF site. So TACAN has a lot that they're, that they're bringing to the table on this. Again, I will let everybody kind of read this at your own, own leisure on this as Buffalo Mountain's another one. I hope everybody's starting to see the pattern here. So it's just not a single site that's going up to Carter County. There's tons of coverage that is going to take place with this. Everybody's very, very excited about it and from governorly down, and I know the mayor's talked to him as well, everybody's watching Carter County. So it's been, it's been an uphill battle, although I think we're finally at the top of the hill. Holston Mountain is another contributing TACAN RF site that's going to be joining this as well. And of course, our, our friends at Elizabethan PD, their site is up, their title, their shelter's going in next week. So again, I will be sure to send Mark some information for next week in case you just happen to be in the [inaudible]. Okay, the timeline, so specifically for the timeline, again, people go, gosh, why does it take two years to, to build a site out? What goes into it? We are obligated by law to follow certain things, both federal and state law, right? So when you get your historical and your environmental legal eagles on top of this, everybody talks to everybody. We have to be very, very compliant. If Motorola is not compliant, we are up against a very, very heavy fine. So it may not sit well with a lot of people, say, hey, you're kind of dragging this out, but it's compliant, it's tight, it's warranted, it's just, it's wonderful. So one of the things that's highlighted right here is just a really quick snapshot, two to three months, equipment manufacturing and staging. So again, all of your equipment's on order. It's expected to be shipped out of Chicago by the end of September. So this is going to land in Manchester, which is about 50 miles, 60 miles south of Nashville. That is all of our staging facility. It's massive down there. So we take it, we inventory it in, make sure everything's on track, and then we will notify Carter County mainly Mark to say, hey, we have it in, and then we'll move from there. So right now, fixed network equipment, site construction, staging, all of this goes on in a pretty rapid succession once we get underway with this. So again, site walks were handled barring no further delays. Motorola is expected to track the plan with completion before the ARPA fund expiration December 2026. But again, everything is going to be driven on the, the road that's being built. We have to be able to access it. So I do have a new project manager. She's already started. She was not able to make it up here today. And so on the next quarterly meeting, which is going to be set right in the third week in October, she will be presenting up the next one to give a more in-depth information update on what we do in Carter County. Any questions? I know this was pretty rapid-fire and a lot to absorb, but we are finally underway. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll make sure that Mark gets this, this deck out to everybody. If you have any questions, you can. Thank you for your time.
If Mr. Payton's still well, I would like to say thank you very much for your task. It's been a lot of detail in there, the creation that I think helped lots of us use your position and things that I didn't understand that I'll do everything better.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. If they, you may also come forward and present a disaster update. That would be more than. Thank you, Director.
Okay, so for the, our disaster update, for all the category A projects, all the paperwork is to be uploaded by the 23rd of this month. Contractors in place for the temporary restaging site on the agenda tonight for Ro Mountain. Category B, all pre-applications are still in the process of being submitted. Submission date was, of 7/23 was given. The temporary bridge, category B, has been obligated and the contract signed with FEMA. We have submitted FEMA to [inaudible] those funds. Our category C, which is all our roads, we've got 17 highway projects that are still at CRC. Contracts are in place to start work in Shell Creek and Hampton areas. We've got 17 projects are in review. We've got NRCS, the contractors. It was closed for Hampton and Sugar Hollow. And we've got Bank Stabilization Projects 1 and 3, which is Shell Creek, some of the Taylors at Keaton, Bakers. And the projects for Hampton and Sugar Hollow should be started shortly. We've got 30 projects that have been submitted to FEMA for, that are in review. POE 1 and 2 bridges, they are in the last engineering phase. I've asked for a percentage, being that they've been in the last for some time, I want a number to give back to y'all. With completion by August, after that, they're looking at about, still the same time period of one to two years to rebuild those two bridges. Long Hollow again is in the last engineering phase. I've asked for a number so we know exactly what part of the last phase. With completion again by August. After that, it'll be about six months to complete Long Hollow. For category E, the site inspections are complete. We're waiting for review at the CRC for the scope and cost analysis. This was buildings. Our parks, Anderson Park, through the working grant application and possibly submitting a FEMA project for that. And category C, all the administrative costs, we're working with FEMA because we're still accumulating those costs. And we're going to see how many projects we can close. The question I've asked today was if we can pick our CAT Z, submit what we have for now as one project, and then category D going forward, submit another one because we can have more administrative costs. That's what happened.
Okay, thank you. All right, enter into public comments. Recycle your mind, anybody who wishes to stay the same then, become entry, commission floor, go to the podium, please try to sneak directly into the microphone. Your first words seem to be your name, and whether or not you're a Carter County citizen, you can tell the district that you would not. We decided that giving your exact address might not be the best idea, so it'll be a little bit more money. And then we ask for respectful, constructive criticism, comments. We did want to hear from you. We're glad you come to the hot, it's up through two hours so far. Thank you for doing that. But we, we appreciate the correct language being used and so on. So they were about to go first in that. And we'll let you go next, sir, okay? Somebody else, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was, I was actually pointing to you, but I wasn't clear. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes, I need to put here.
There you go.
Okay. My name is Sandra Munker, and you didn't want us to give our addresses, but I live in Hampton. My husband and I own two properties that border what is supposedly going to be the quarry up on the mountain. And we do border Gary Davis Storm. And the first we heard of this, a gentleman from DCE Technical came by, knocked on our door and said, I have been hired by Lake River Construction to come to your house to inspect, to take pictures inside and out, our videos, because they're going to be blasting on the mountain beside of you. And if you don't do this, you will sign that if anything happens, we will not be responsible. So I went down to the camp, I came to the courthouse, and I got a copy. This is a copy of all the documents that pertain to that. There was a small notice that nearly expected to start on April the 30th of '25 that said it was a notice I intend to mine, and it said in Elizabethan. It did not mention Dennis Cove. It did not mention Hampton. It said Elizabethan. So we would know that it was property next to us. And I want to tell you that our homes, our water comes from springs out of the mountain. That's our only water supply. We are not a reluctant utility district, and if they're going to blast, it is going to hurt our springs. And possibly if there's a well being dug next door, it is going to hurt us, that blasting. There will be trucks coming in and out of that property that will hurt the road. Carter County will have to replace the road. I am told that this is phase one of the project. And in this paperwork, it says that it ends in September. So what will phase two be? If they're doing this in phase one, what will this be? It seems to me that it's unethical and a conflict of interest for somebody on the planning and zoning commission to throw, to re-sign with their own property and do this to our community. And I do have neighbors here today, and of course, you've probably seen it on TV. But we are very concerned about this. If you come down the road, the foreland, and you look up, you will see where they've already cleared out trees and everything in the middle of the mountain. So they've already defaced the mountain. So this, it says in this paperwork that it's a million-dollar project. So who's getting all the money? You know? So I just want, I appreciate you listening to me. I do understand that the zoning and planning commission comes under what is a private act. What that is, I really don't know. They just don't have any oversight. So does that tell me that they can just do what they want to? If they have no oversight? So again, we are very, very concerned about what's going on on this property that borders us and very much concerned about our water supply. Like I said, that is our only water supply in our homes, is in those mountain springs. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I guess to get started for myself, I'm just going to kind of scoot this back and ask, can everybody hear me? I can speak louder than this, but can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Ben Brown. I am from Hampton, raised, worked, live in Hampton, Tennessee, and these are my thoughts about this proposed project. So I'd like to open by asking a question. Who among those gathered here today by a show of hands could have looked at a newspaper article and told me where the Elizabethan, Tennessee, 7.5-minute USGS quadrangle in the Laurel Fork watershed was located? Please, show of hands. Is that what I thought? So despite this lack of clear communication, we have been told there is transparency, simply because this was put in the newspaper. To me, this is in no way clear and transparent communication. If plain wording such as a town name and street address or even a property parcel number would have been used, people might have had a chance at understanding. But I do not believe understanding to be the point of this notice, as understanding from the community of the proposed location of this project most certainly would have resulted in pushback, something I feel all those involved in bringing this project to fruition wanted to avoid, seeing as they weren't even willing to host any sort of informational meeting with the community who would be directly impacted by this project. This project has already ruined a quiet slice of the American dream for anyone currently raising or looking to raise a family in Hampton, as well as for those whose families have lived here for generations. Property values will most certainly decrease for anyone who can see or hear the work that is being done. Given its location on the ridge, there will be very few places in the main valley of Hampton where this work cannot be seen nor heard. Also worth noting, decreased property values decreases the county's revenue as a whole. It's also worth noting that this project poses a risk to all nearby homes. As the Bureau of Mines recognizes, there may be no absolute minimum vibration damage threshold. That is, when inevitable pre-strain conditions are present in a home, any blast-induced ground vibrations may cause damage to the home. Furthermore, heavy loaded truck traffic will soon descend on Dennis Cove Road, an already busy and narrow residential street. This type of traffic will not only be a nuisance for those living directly on and just off of Dennis Cove Road, but is also well-known to cause extensive damage to roadways. Damage that, as far as I'm aware, is not to be paid for by the property owner or the project manager, but by us as citizens with our tax dollars. Over the last several years, I had thought that Carter County was leaning into and had a vested interest in so-called keep Carter County beautiful efforts, to which this project runs completely contrary. The serene beauty of our quiet mountain valley is now assailed six days a week by the cacophony of heavy equipment scraping, hammering, and tearing away at the mountain. As a matter of fact, at this very moment, as you drive into Hampton from Elizabethan, the scar on the mountain this project has already created is one of the very first things in the Valley of Hampton that catches your eye. The trees that were initially taken off the property could have regrown, but the mountain itself does not have that luxury. Once the damage is done, there is no fixing it. In conclusion, I'm extremely disappointed and heartbroken that this project has been allowed to disrupt our community. Our county commissioners, planning committee members, planning director, and other county officials need to be held accountable for allowing a few individuals to line their pockets while directly impacting the financial well-being and quality of life of our community. Thank you so much for your time. I would also like to point out, there are several copies of the notice of intent, as well as the stormwater pollution prevention plan here with us available for viewing this evening. Thank you so much.
Audience, I understand this is a very heated issue, but you are not allowed to yell or anything like that at speakers. So kindly, I ask you to not do that. Back to the next speaker.
Good evening, Commissioner Shinkford, 1002 Dry Creek Road. I don't wanna keep beating a dead horse, but I want to just give you an update on an email that any of you guys seen from me. TCA 8-47, that's 103 mandates to county attorney best to get complaints regarding misconduct. As you know, I supplied the county attorney, Harden, with a letter in regards to First Amendment violations, some of which occurred in this room, at which pretty much every one of you guys were here and witnessed. If you remember, what happened was the county attorney said we could not address her. Any of you guys reached out to me and said I should file a complaint. The attorneys I talked to said I should file a complaint. Then we hoped to hopefully settle that local. And also, my complaint was in reference to social media page that the mayor had listed. It was listed as Patty Woodby, county mayor. After I spoke about that, that page was taken down. What I spoke about, about that page, was if I made a comment and it was negative, it would be removed. Because the Supreme Court has clearly ruled that that's a personal violation. I had an IT team preserve all that on paper and digitally. Because right after that, when that page was deleted, it's almost like the evidence went away. But it hasn't gone away because we preserved it. So I received a letter back from the county attorney. And in short, he says that when the mayor said that we could not address her, that's not a First Amendment violation. Everybody I talked to, First Amendment constitutional attorneys say this. He went on to say that basically, all the things I said were unsupported. Now, like I said, the Supreme Court has ruled when you delete someone's comments and your page says Patty Woodby, Carter County Mayor, it is a First Amendment violation. Attorney Harden is the first county attorney in history to overrule the Supreme Court. Should be noted. In a letter to me, he says some of my content, comments may appeal to me and my audience, but serve no legitimate purpose. Let me tell you who my audience is. My audience is 99% of this county who believes when you raise that right hand, it is like Captain Sinatra with his five gentlemen. Can you take that oath to honor the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of Tennessee? Did you honor that oath? We're not asking you to do a whole lot. Just honor the oath. And we're also asking the county attorney to honor his fiduciary responsibility, to honor his oath set forth in the statute of 8-47-103. The county mayor, I'm sorry, the county attorney also goes on to say that some of this is for my personal political motives. Set the record straight right here. I have no political motives. I believe in the Constitution. I believe in truth, honesty. And I believe, again, you should honor that oath. It shouldn't be that complicated. So whenever we circle back here, as of July 1, it's a shame we have to go to Nashville to get things done. House Bill 1097 says if the counties, I believe Josh touched on this June 16 meeting, if the county does not take care of constitutional violations, all state funding is withheld until that is resolved. And that is in a three-judge panel. Now, that three-judge panel is outside the friends and family program that we see here in Carter County. Which is important. Real quick, on the autopulse, so we purchased for POGY. Initially, we were told we couldn't use it. Then we were told we could use it. Hopefully, Jason will follow up on that if you have time, and it's been a long meeting. But originally, we were told there's not a state law that regards automatic CPR devices. We weren't gonna buy a $25,000 paperweight. That's why we bought it. But so far, they're not allowed to use it. And if everyone in here claims, or people, that we can't say their names, claims to have pull of the state, surely we can pull. And get that taken care of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You are asked not to do that.
Step a little bit closer to me, so we can hear you. Hi, my name is Alex Dunham, Carter County, Upper Mountain. A little newer here. But I love it here. It's really beautiful. I love Hampton. I go there every morning to a beautiful little shop called Appalachian Coffee Cupboard. And I don't know where the old lady was where she went, but she kept on saying Appalachian. I'm like, I've been corrected a million times already as Appalachian.
You don't come around this part.
So I was a little disappointed with that. But I got some questions about this quarry going and up there that, yeah, it has left a pretty ugly scar on those mountains. I am kind of curious how it did happen. As I said, I'm not here all that long, just seven short months. But I like to be involved, and I like to know what's going on. And I was at the meeting for the zoning and planning commission about the, where they basically sandbagged the dudes from TikTok there about the camping, lamping, pornography camping, whatever you wanna call it. I was there for that. And a nice man, Mr. Chris Schuler, ran an excellent meeting. He was very quick and right to the point about it, but he sandbagged them pretty good for the next few years. They're gonna be chasing them tails trying to get every government agency to go get all those little reports they wanted. But what he also said was, he took the drive that morning up that road. And it was a very, very narrow road. Storm damage, what have you. And there was a sweet little old lady that got up here and testified. Tiny woman, about yay big. She goes, "Sometimes I have to take, I have to back my car up because trucks can't fit a vehicle, and a truck can't fit going up and down that street. They can't get out." Now Dennis, those areas, those roads over there by Dennis Cove, this is what the residents will set for with kind of holding off about road construction, those hills, engineering, what have you. Who did, who did that for this? Because that road is very narrow, and it's gonna impact the way that people live. I just wanna know, who did it? Who signed off on that? Does anyone here know? You? Who? Name? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Schuler. He's the one who signed off on it. But yet, he took, he took that same trip up to the, I'm sorry, Heathen Valley Road with the camping resort with the... What's the difference between those two roads? Please, someone educate me, because I'm kind of stupid here. Anyone can tell me the difference between those two roads, why one got approved and one didn't? Other than this one has, this one is not morally questionable on the religious aspect, I should say, not... I just wanna know what the difference between those two roads is and why one was passed and why wasn't.
This is not a question and answer session. So sorry that they don't answer it.
Hello, my name is Celeste Lance, and I work at the Appalachian Coffee Cupboard. We are located on First Ave in Hampton, Tennessee. Today, I would like to express my concern over the lack of communication to local businesses regarding this project. We are not informed that heavy loud road trucks would be using the road directly accessing our business. We are not informed that First Avenue would be closed on the week of April 30th for paving and painting, which did adversely impact our business for the duration of the time that the road, on our side of the road was closed for the painting. There's no other access. We were given, literally noticed the day of. Basically said, hey, we're painted, we're closing all this off. My bosses were not informed. They were not able to properly inform us. And we did experience a loss of revenue at that time. We also, it was not clear then why the road was being repaired, why that of all roads was chosen and prioritized over the many other roads that need repair. It is quite clear now why that repair was deemed a priority. I also have very grave concerns about how this quarry bar op will impact our business and the residents of Hampton. The vast majority of our revenue comes during the summer months, as many, many of the businesses that exist in Hampton do. People come to Hampton for the absolutely stunning mountain views that we have that are, I can tell you, unparalleled anywhere else in the country. People come to enjoy the waterways. They bring their children there during the summer breaks. And most importantly, we have a trailhead right there in Hampton for the Appalachian Trail. That brings so, so many people to that area, specifically during trail days. That area is packed out with people. The major draw being the Appalachian Trail. If the views of the Appalachian Trail are obliterated there, as this would presume to do, we would lose, who knows how much revenue. Many hikers and outdoor recreationists support our small, local business, especially during those annual trail days. I fear this decision will have lasting negative impacts on the businesses and residents that should be seriously considered. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anything else that wishes to speak? Can I? Okay, sir.
My name is Michael Clausen. I think most everybody, well, not most, a lot of people will know me. I live in Hampton. I happen to be a roadway inspector on the job where they build from Hampton to Elizabethan or the Laurel Valley, Fort Gary. Metro Construction was the company that did it. And it appears to me, from what little bit I've heard, they're expecting the taxpayers to pay for the maintenance and resurface of the road, the road damage. Because that is exactly what happened with Metro Call. They moved to the subdivisions and wasted material. They destroyed the roads, and the county pay park defeats them. Is it my place that I should be charged extra taxes to pay for this when the benefit goes to these contractors? I don't know. There's been a lot said, but I don't think they've addressed properly what I think is the real problem. Hampton has a spring. Elizabethan gives their water south Elizabethan from another spring that's located in the same area. I don't know if anybody knows, but I worked for the state for almost 43 years. And I went to Nashville. They sent me to a Blaston school. And that was probably in the neighborhood of 30 years ago or maybe a little bit more. But when they drill and blast, do not think that it will not affect our water system in South Elizabethan and all the people that has wells that don't need it. It will destroy everybody's. But it will affect. There's not no question. Anybody that's willing to question, they need to go try to take a slice or a few slices on Blaston and see what happens. Waves that travel through the ground are waves that can go actually farther than if, you know, if they underload the shots. It makes a difference in how far those waves, which are waves in the ground. I would just like to see how do they, or do they have all the permits that is necessary to do this? And is it just a county permit? Do they have to go through the state? And, you know, if they blew these two water systems and she was concerned about springs, she definitely needs to be concerned. But now, I do know for fact, matter of fact, I took pictures. I actually had to locate all the locations where Metro was placed. And at that time, it will be extreme damage to the roads. You people wanna figure out how you're gonna handle it. One, my opinion will be if the mayor raises taxes in order to do it. So we will be paying for it. Obviously, it's in Carter County. I guess the way to do things, this should have been kept quiet, sure recently. I definitely don't appreciate it. But one other thing, changing the subject, I know probably you're gonna like it. But if you are people, all you commissioners, if you're representing the people, why is it that you're not concerned about all the houses that were flooded and destroyed? Peoples have to put it back. Why do you not take that into consideration? I was told, and I ain't saying this is true, in '98, when we got flooded, I was told that there was in excess of $30 million put up to take care of the flooding issue at the creek at Pine Hampton High School. I had talked once before about it. I'm talking along some of that. But why are we not concerned about those people? Are they not citizens of this county? It is so simple to fix that issue, and there would not even have been a flood there. But I didn't see nobody that was interested in doing anything about it. A simple issue is that the water came down in North Carolina, but it traveled from North Carolina in our direction because that's the way water runs, as they're in people. So why is it that people is not concerned about fixing probably somewhere between 50 and 100 homes that was flooded that should never have been flooded simply because nobody would take nothing and take care of it? It would have been a simple issue to place a track up at both Hampton Bridge and on the foreland.
Mr. Clausen, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Does anyone else come in to speak tonight? Okay. We will close by the comments, but I believe that doesn't mean that there won't be discussion later. I suspect there will be. But that comes after all the other things that we're gonna be voting on. Not, it will, it will be Friday time with Commissioner's comments if it is discussed. Thank you for understanding how the comments work. All right, let's take another break. About 15 minutes.
I don't know what to argue about this. We believe that.
Hush, hush.
Break's over.
Yeah.
I think we're all back now, so we will get started.
First up.
Um, committee reports is the legislative chairman of the.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hello.
Folks, we have eleven items to come forward. Let me refer you to July fifteenth, budget committee meeting. Want to look at the items a little bit more closely. I will do as I have done in the past unless there is objection. I will go down the list. If you want specifics about any of those items, please ask. Otherwise, it will warrant a sentence motion as we approve this. First item which I'll bring to the table is a motion to approve the sheriff's office purchase AED that costs not to exceed two hundred and thirty-one thousand with payments to come from opioid settlement account.
Is seconded by Nick Holter for their question or comments?
Just so that you know, as a little bit further edification, there were one hundred and thirteen of those units. Majority of them will put you into the sheriff's office and the ones that go in the following year, fire departments or other locations. Daykeeper on that will be EMA. We will assure that those items get to where they need to go with appropriate paper. They will not be responsible for trying. That is their minds.
Thank you. We're voting.
Wait, my phone has died.
Any deal?
Yes.
He donned it a little bit. He's gotta be dead.
Yes.
We'll have service in action.
I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Twenty-two and affirmative. Our second item, uh, we're coming from budget tonight. I'll make the motion to approve a purchase order to beam construction for the NCRS bank stabilization road group number two in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand and one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion seconded by Avery Nguyen. Anything we need to talk about? All right, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. All unanimous. Item number three, and I'll place into motion to approve a purchase order to beam construction for the NCRS bank stabilization road group number four in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Motion seconded by Leslie Hughes. Seeing no request to speak, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. All eyes. Item number four, which I will place into motion is to approve a purchase order to Hampton Construction and Development for the Roan Mountain debris site restoration in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars.
Motion seconded by Nancy Brown. Are there any questions on this? Any votes? Vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
No.
Who's in line?
No.
And Paul Smith?
Yes.
Eyes have it. Twenty-two. I'll place into motion, um, number five, which is to approve county fund budget amendment one oh-one dash one, items one and two, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, with three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Motion seconded by Avery Nguyen. Any discussion? Please vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
All right, before we vote your deal, we'll also bring a bill. Mr. Johnson, is there a request to speak by you? Is that correct?
It's correct.
True.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We'll move on to item number six. I'll place into motion, approve general purpose school fund budget of M of one four, one dash one, item one, in the amount of eleven thousand dollars. Nothing coming from reserve fund accounts, if nothing coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Motion seconded by Leslie Hughes. Does anyone have a comment? We're voting.
Chair Crawford? Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
All eyes. Thank you. Move to item number seven, which I will place into motion to approve the animal shelter monetary donations in the amount of two thousand and fifty dollars.
Seconded by Leslie Hughes. We're voting.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item number eight, place into motion to approve the animal shelter non-monetary donations totaling three hundred and twenty dollars.
Seconded by Bonnie Cable. We're voting.
Chair Crawford? Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Item number nine, and I know it's seen a little concern, um, the correction side, jail side of the house of the sheriff's department. So I will place into motion to. To approve bonuses in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to the jail captain, one thousand five hundred dollars to the jail lieutenant, and one thousand dollars to the jail sergeant for. Reaching tier one accreditation with no findings for the third year in a row, refunds to come from the unassigned fund balance.
Motion seconded by Jason Clausen. Is there any discussion needed?
I think Carolyn has figured what that will cost us. Do you have that?
It's in line.
She's led. You got this motion. Well, we can wait till we get it. Okay, we're ready.
Yes, we are.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We've gone to item number ten. So I place into motion to approve bonuses in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for the remaining full-time jail employees and one hundred and fifty dollars for the part-time jail employees for reaching tier one accreditation with no funds for the third year in a row. There's no findings for the third year in a row, funds coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Does anyone have a question?
We're voting. Chair Crawford?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Any deal? Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Last item from the budget committee, item number eleven. I'll place into motion to approve county fund budget amendment one oh-one dash one B, item one, for jail employee bonuses in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, with seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Motion seconded by Avery Nguyen. Any comments?
This is the jail unassigned fund balance, correct, not?
No, that's the county unassigned fund balance.
Anything else? Okay, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Madam Chair, I yield back.
Thank you, sir. To the financial management committee chair, Brad Johnson.
Well, uh, we got five items. I want to just reiterate, item number one and two, more or less are combined because they're the same document. There's two sections to it. First one is, before I go into place motion on number one, uh, business actions being taken because this is the first regular scheduled commission meeting since we have taken on a new contract with Cigna versus Blue Cross Blue Shield. Since the first of July, we have been able, our broker and our insurance provider, carrier, have been able to get all ID cards out to our employees, uh, also giving them information. And I'll show you, this is a booklet that goes off our employees. We're gonna give them some backgrounds. Basically, in the insurance industry, we swap even. There was no, uh, additional cost for our insurance. This year between Blue Cross and Cigna, half of their book, uh, Cigna is just as popular rated as what Blue Cross Blue Shield is. Everybody around us accepts, uh, the same services. Uh, our broker, which is one digital, well, not to excuse me, called Coia, and some of you started that. This year, in going after our, uh, charge or pay for our insurance, it's generally been a fiasco for the past three and four years. Two point is, eight, nine, ten, eleven percent increases in our employees' insurance. Remember, you are the county commission and the county pays ninety percent of the employees' insurance benefits. There are some requirements to this that we tried for the past three years to get, and that is their preventive care examination. Started out as it was only about twenty percent, but we do that. Anyway, the second year, when we got hit with a twelve percent increase in insurance that cost over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we only had forty percent of our employees good. This is the previous year we had, and it improved by two percent, went to forty-two. Broker and our insurance rep do have been telling us all along, you have to get those numbers up, or your increases go up because that's very critical. One of the more critical items of that will, the spoke, it turns, and it cost us over a hundred thousand extra every year because they walk, go and get their exam. This commission has been great. We have been doing everything to pay them to do it. The one pays for their day off. The only thing we have not done in the past two years is contract with Uber to go in their house and go get more, and take them to the doctor's office, and then pick them back up, and then take them back to the E's at your. That's the only thing we haven't done.
All eyes.
See, financial management committee and its discussions, if you look at the remainder of everything, we have, uh, asked that. Abiding by the rules and all, that was nothing beneficial to them regardless whether it went or not. We have to get the people to go get their pre-examination. So with the motion coming from our committee, uh, it was approved unanimous that there be a ten percent, uh, penalty if you do not get your, uh, true examination for this upcoming year. And I think it is on the bottom of it, it goes between January one of twenty-five to March thirty-one of twenty-six. That's how much time you got. Now, if you just think just a minute, and you can go here and read, hey, I mean, and here it goes to a doctor once a year regardless. Well, this means, yay, old man, you can raise your arm. Have you ever been to a doctor last year?
Only time in the last three and a half.
Will you doc? Would you help?
What do we need to do for driver?
Work of the pole position, too bad.
That's the BA, and been able to get into sleep.
This, this, this means yes, this means no. Anyhow, in that discussion, unanimously, we put it for seventy, ten percent penalty on those who do not complete either exam. It does not cost them anything. They still get paid for their day off. Insurance company pays for all the exam. If you're, duh, go ahead and tell them you'd like to have your pre-exam in the same time. You don't have to do it in two separate one, unless medically there is a problem that would fit. So for the first one is, is to make sure that you understand that, just the more Blue Cross Blue Shield, we are under the Cigna, and we have had, according to our finest record, we have had no complaints or no issues during the transition whatsoever. So I place into motion to approve notice regarding changes to employees' insurance.
Seconded by Robert DeCave. Anybody have a question? All right, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Danny Dill? Paul Smith?
Yes.
All right, Chair Johnson, you have asked.
Now, the second one, as I told you previously, number two, I placed into motion, and it consists of the description at the very last paragraph, uh, number one, and that is to the employees choose the non-high deductible coverage options will have a ten percent surcharge added to the employees' portion of their insurance premium if they choose not to complete the annual maintenance care. The six point O is the paragraph which will go in the employees handbook. This document was created and authorized by the attorney and has been reviewed. So I place into motion, approve revised employee policy six point zero, employee insurance to replace the current policy in the Carter County employee handbook.
All right, we have a second. Are you leaving or yet? Does anyone have a question? Let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I guess, uh, the next item is previously touched on by Dr. Carton, the director of school. This is a motion to approve an AIA contract between Carter County Schools and Borough City Construction Company Incorporated for project management for the restoration of Hampton High School that was passed on from the board to, uh, financial management. Um, that is, the amount is one not to exceed, uh, purchase order of seven hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty. And the, uh, invoice for construction not to exceed fifteen million, seven hundred and sixty-seven, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, that motion has been seconded by Robert DeCave. Any questions on this one? Okay, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
And a motion passes.
Passes. Okay, this is also a bit pre, uh, open, uh, see in the budget, it has to deal with of the restoration of the demolition site in Roan Mountain. That identified, I place into motion to accept the project proposal in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the site restoration for Roan Mountain DMS, site of Hampton, destruction and development liability, and approve for the mayor to sign the contract for the project. This is FEMA reimbursement because it was also bidded out under federal regulations, not local.
Motion seconded by Nancy Brown. Any conversation needed here? Yes, great.
Uh, we already approved that amount on the budget committee on form, because it had to be approved twice.
To approve for the mayor to actually sign the contract because that was not put in the motion earlier.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I'm just curious because I've never seen, I've not seen this since I've been here. Filing on these contracts, is this different from other contracts?
Most of them, all the contracts that have to be approved under financial management and they got.
Anybody else have a question? All right, let's vote. I'm sorry, you're right?
No.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
No.
And no? Bonnie Cable?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Four, two, Tuesday, impacts. The last item we have in the financial management is the motion to approve the transfer of surplus property from the mayor's office to the finance department dated June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. These items are, package, you'll see, with computer monitor tower, the transfer of it.
Okay, motion seconded by Avery Nguyen. Any questions? All right, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Bonnie Cable?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair. All right, how will committee? Very quick.
This is my first time at the foreyard on this, the Cowell's Park.
You what?
Uh, in your package, you'll find two papers. It is a deed to a piece of property. It's an unopened street on College Park, and I'll make a motion that we accept what we're doing is, is a non-useful piece of property, and we're dividing between two property owners, and. Attorney Hardin can explain anything if you have any questions on this.
No, I'll ask for a second.
You have a second, or Avery Nguyen? Does anyone have a question? Okay, let's vote.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Bonnie Cable?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, dominating committee, Representative Darrell Mayfield.
The first one, uh, make a motion to appoint Dr. Arnold Hoplin, Chris Guy, Jimmy Street, Ross South, and Mark Johnson to Carter County Industrial Bureau.
You want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, this board have been active in about two or three years. Uh, it's a nine-person board. It was advertised, no new members, and these five have agreed to turn on this podium.
Good, thank you. You have a second, from Robert DeCave? Is there any other question or comments? We're voting on this industrial development board membership.
Chair Crawford?
Yes.
Any deal?
Yes.
Bonnie Cable?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, second, uh, motion to appoint Aaron Rebecca Mulligan to the Elizabethan Carter County Library.
All right, you have a second, from?
Hold on just a second.
Oh, you got a time to video.
Sorry, I didn't. Danny, are these one-year terms? How do they?
I'm not sure about the library. Yeah.
No, they, they notify us when someone has resigned or created, but I can see these aren't mission or appointments or anything of that nature. The commission just has to appoint an interested member. So I'm not sure. I just know this was a vacancy that they asked us to fill, but specifics of the term, not sure.
Okay, you have a second from Lisa Childers. Does anyone else have a question? All right, let's vote on this library appointment.
Chair Prophet?
Yes.
Danny Deal?
Yes.
Tony Cable?
Yes.
Paul Smith?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. I see you're ready to be on the attorney's report.
All right, as usual, I'll give you a little bit of a discussion update in general. The litter violation cases through the prosecutor, through the planning office, continue. There were four new complaints that have been filed this month already, and two other complaints that are waiting for director approval to file. Three total cases were actually fully completed and removed from the court pocket this month after fines was finally achieved. One went on for a year or so and finally resolved this past month. The county was named as defending a new lawsuit in circuit court, but only as a formality, it's a property condemnation on Gap Creek for the bridge, and the county has to be included just in form liability-wise in that. Otherwise, the work that I do each month is documented in writing, as always, and will be part of the minutes for the county, the minutes. And anybody who has a question, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Attorney Hardin?
Okay, and Mr. Remini said he did not call for any other committee reporters before we made the county attorney of the board. Did anybody else want to report on something that their committee isn't working on? Okay, I will just say that the joint economic community development board meets tomorrow evening at five, including the mayor's conference room. If anybody wants to be in, I encourage you to. This committee has really stepped up. It decided on our own to start meeting every month. There's a lot of pride lies in the ring, and a lot of work is being done. We don't present something to the commission probably by September, maybe. Anything else?
Okay, we are into Commissioner Collins now. Yes, Kelly Collins.
I'd just like to say that I know there's been some complaints about this meeting, and it seems like we're meeting late. But years ago, it was nothing for us to be here till midnight. And I think it's very important that we let people speak, whether it be the public or commissioners. And I commend our chairperson for keeping the meetings moving and not letting people repeat over and over again. And I just want to remind you all that even though it's 9:15, this is still very early compared to how it used to be.
Thank you, Kelly Collins. I appreciate those words returned. And if you want to hear anybody, that's a part of that, just that's very awesome. I'll make up the truth how late I've been here many times. Anybody else? Yes, Carolyn?
I would just like to ask the like department heads, anybody that has like these big projects in the county, it doesn't matter which department it comes through or who it is. Do you have anything like this coming into your district? Can they bring it to the commission and kind of give us a heads up? For us commissioners, when we have people call us, we're not sitting there saying, I don't have a clue what you're talking about. I mean, I know that we don't have to vote on it. It doesn't have to be approved or anything. But it's just letting the taxpayers know what's going on. So everybody's not calling, and we're saying we have no idea. You know, we're supposed to be commissioners. We're supposed to know what's going on in our districts.
Thank you.
The commission, if it desires, could make a motion, and we'd vote on it. Ask them to come up for us, but it would be a request on, you know, we have no authority over elected officials, and most of our heads are only governed by their communities or the mayor's office. So basically, the mayor of the board.
I'm sure.
Yes.
May I add that, please? We do have control, if you think about it. We control the budget stream. If you can't get their attention, then I think we can. Is that not correct, County Attorney? We have the budget stream for the many departments. So if you want to take it that way, you'd be kind.
I think this reporting from the committees would help them a little bit. We don't always bring our reports to this meeting, but that would address what she's talking about.
I think a couple of times recently, I was blindsided by things like that. One is the Glamping Resort. I heard about that. The day it was all happening. Or I heard about that just by accident on news feed. We don't have any control over what that is because the state has certain requirements. If they meet that, we require requirements, then we don't have a say in it. I understand that. But it would be nice to be able to pass that information on the law for constituents.
Yes, I understand the points you're making, Ms. Hughes.
Completely different subject. I just wanted to say that we had a meeting, well, EMA held a meeting the other day for an after-action plan with emergency responders. I just wanted to like praise Director Umkin and Luke. The, I mean, the turnout was amazing from the first responder agencies with fire departments from the city, the county volunteer. We had highway department there. We had sheriff's department and city police, everybody there that was involved. And it was just a good meeting to talk about some of the concerns that we had, some of the things that we would, you know, do differently next, you know, in the next disaster. Your EMA is doing a great job of leading us to plan for the next thing and mitigation. And we've got, we've got great ideas that came out of it. So I just wanted to pass that along to everybody who's over there.
Yeah, I'm really encouraged with the leadership of the EMA. Encouraged with their leadership, a lot of hope for what they're doing.
I appreciate you all encouraging each other tonight. And I want to give encouragement to Dr. DeKev, the budget committee, and the finance department. I know we're a month away from analyzing our budgets, but there was a lot of good leadership on that committee. Our great coach is professional, efficient, shows wisdom in developing the budget. And, you know, also, if you've never served on budget, and we've only offered more here this time, you know, I would encourage you to serve on that committee so that you can appreciate the minimum hours of work that goes into conducting interviews, researching past expenditures, and analyzing the department requires. And as you all saw, some departments had a zero increase. I think we need to pay attention to do those departments' work and command them. But I also think, as been mentioned, I'm just doing it because it's something that's so special. What happened in that is insurance department, A, the budget committee, and the submission impacting the 2014-2016 budget with no increase to the taxpayers. You really think through this area because we were looking at having to not fund the outside agencies or the budget at a small amount. And so it is coming through about $100,000 there when I allowed them to get the money that they requested. So thank you to everybody involved. Okay, Paul Smith?
Now you're in trouble. I even brought water this time.
We can talk about it.
And for those who are on the budget committee, this is not about the four kiddies I had to give away. But if you happen to meet one, I have usually found after the meeting. So keep that in mind. That is not the point of me being up here tonight. I'm here to sort of trumpet what we've heard from some of the citizens in Hampton, and how we got here, and my involvement in how we got here, and why there is so much lack of information as far as the citizen is concerned. If you all remember, on February the 17th, those of you all were here, we had a gentleman come in who was talking about water and drainage on his property in the Branger community. And I spoke up, I will be over to look at it myself the next day. That was the first time I came across any mention of a rock, borrow pit, quarry, or eating thing. And it was quite accidental. I found out while searching this gentleman's property. At the next meeting, on Thursday, March 6th, we had a special meeting at that time. I approached our director of planning and asked him to keep me in the loop. I'd like to keep know what's going on. Of course, I was giving assurances, don't worry about it. It's just going to be a borrow pit. They're going to take the dirt off, get the rock, bring the dirt back. I was done and said. Immediately walked from the director to Commissioner Burrow because I told him that since I didn't, wasn't real sure that that would be followed through with, I wanted a second person to come to me and let me know if something come up. On, that was on March 6th. Keep that in mind. Nothing was talked about after that, no discussion, no, hey, this is where it's at, nothing. Until on Tuesday, July the 8th. That's when I got a phone call saying, what's all this equipment going up on? It's code. I thought you were supposed to keep us in the loop here. I don't know what's going on. I called planning. I was told there that the permit was issued, that they were instructed to issue the permit. I called Commissioner Burrow, and he was nice enough to say, I'll find out, see what I can find out for you. And again, thank you, Steve. I appreciate you doing that. He's kind of been caught in the middle of this, but thank you. I do appreciate that. Called me back, said, well, this is what's going on. It's, they've got the permit, everything's good to go. You should get a phone call this afternoon from the director. I said, great. I'm gonna call from the director. Wednesday, July 9th, spoke with Commissioner again at that time. Was told that, I told him that the director had not spoken to me. And he said, well, let me give him a call, and I'll let you know when I find out. Called me back, said he'll get back with you today. It was on July 9th, November. Saturday, July 12th, I called Commissioner Burrow again. Bless his heart, I'm going to put him on my Christmas list, aren't I? Called him again about letters that were now popping up because we'd been told early on, there'll be no blasting. Don't worry about that. That's not even a discussion here. It's not going to happen. Great. Until Saturday, July 12th, the letters started popping up on people's doors saying, hey, guys, you need to let this company in to look at your property because we are going to be blasting. And they were even telling people, we're going to stop next week. You need to get this done as soon as possible. And there's still a couple of people in here tonight that received that end of the conversation. And there's plenty more, trust me. On Monday, July the 14th, I called State Fire Marshal's office. In case you don't know, that's who issues the permits for. I thought that was kind of unusual, but then you think blasting, fire, boom, fire marshal. Makes perfect sense. And of course, I was curious on how that was, how that was done because I was very uneducated on it. And for all of our knowledge, that permit is actually given to the blaster. When the companies come in, they hire this blaster union. And the permit is actually written out to them. So that was great information. But I was passing on concerns to the office of the fire marshal that there were several people back in that area that had both wells and springs, and they were concerned. And he said, well, in his years, that he personally had never seen a well or a spring collapse, personally. He said that it would have extra sediment in the water that may have to be filtered, that that would be expected because you will have blast waves in the ground, even though it's not going to be a huge blast. And again, I put on blind a link to the fire marshal site. Explains a little about, a bit about the blasting. So we're all, we're not as terrified of it as it sounds. It's, it's really a very controlled explosion that they're using. That part, I'm glad. I got the answer I needed from the fire marshal. But he cannot rule out that it is not a possible. You could say it is definitely possible just because I have not seen it. Tell me a thing. But it should not happen. And in the conversation, now keep in mind, this is on July the 14th, and I've been told on two different occasions now there'd be no blasting. July 14th, when I was speaking to the fire marshal, I said, by the way, have they applied for a blasting permit? Sure has. It was issued on July the 9th. But I've been told between July the 9th and the 14th, there'd be no blasting. Now, keep in mind, I understand all this has been by the rulebook. It's been by the letter of the law. Squeaking of their teeth, it was done by exactly the way that it was prescribed to do. And that is sad. It's sad that we don't listen, we don't even give the citizens a chance to voice their opinion and their thoughts on a subject that large. I don't care what's allowed. I don't care what you write or what the law may say. I care whether or not my citizens are going to be blindsided by something like this. And if you didn't see tonight they were blindsided, then you're blind. I'm sorry, but that's just a fact. Now, how does all this link together? I'm glad you asked. I'm going to tell you how this links together. Not long after we came into office after September of 2022, we had a position on the planning commission that came open. And when we found out that there was only one person's name on the list for that position, which was the property owner of where the blasting is going on at. Of course, at that time, it was irrelevant. But we just knew that he had just lost an election in the sixth district. And the last thing those people wanted was to be represented by you. So we went out and we searched high and low till we found an individual that came in here and stamped for you as an alternative. What do you think we did? We voted him in. And me and Donnie both were upset and voiced our opinion that you're going against what the people of the sixth district want it. And this is living proof. And it's not the first time that this happened. And we've had a commissioner that's lost an election, goes straight from the commission into planning. Am I right for those of you that have been here a while? Yep, I'm right. So that leads us to where we're at. And unfortunately, we have to share our burden of pain as well because we had an opportunity to cut the head off right then. In talking to TDEC and other officials, I quickly found out that the private act at which we are under as far as our planning goes in Carter County is a very old law. I believe it was 1972 when it was first passed. And that was at a time when the state of Tennessee had no such law. They let every county handle it the way they wanted to. Since then, there's been two altercations to the private act. I believe it was in 2002 and the last one in 2019. And both times, it was due to, it was about who would serve, how many would serve, how long they would serve. That was the last time. So I inquired about, well, what if we repeal the private act to go under state law? And we'll do what you get now because guess what? State law mirrors our law with one difference. Instead of the commissioners under the private act that appoints members of the planning commission, the mayor will. It would be her so per review. And I can guarantee, Mayor Donald, that I fixed your job. And I think we can all agree, if you've got 24 people deciding, you're probably better off getting a better position for the job. And it makes everyone feel... for the job, and it makes everyone feel more set. Now, while I wasted all this breath, I, I, first of all, I want to hope that it's not a waste. I hope you're taking what I'm saying to heart. We had a chance, we have a chance to make some changes. We have a chance to make sure this never happens again. And all it takes is the planning commission to write into their rules and their bylaws that anything of this standard goes before the full planning commission, because obviously this did not, it wasn't required to. Again, I said they followed the letter of the law. They did, because this wasn't required to. Did you all see the results of what was required to be done and how that went tonight? That's what I've been dealing with the last two weeks, and I feel sorry for these people, I do. A lot of them are elderly people over there that ain't got any rules to get. I feel bad when they're looking at me and saying, you promised me. And all I can say, well, I was promised. I don't ease it one little bit. So what I'm gonna do tonight is gonna be unprecedented, because this is gonna reference a new law in the state of Tennessee. Took place in April, is that correct, Josh?
Yes, sir.
I want to ask in the form of a motion, that our regularly scheduled meeting next month, not the, the special meeting, but our regularly called meeting in the month of August, that we put on the agenda the removal of Planning Commissioner Gary Bailey. Now, that requires a majority vote from you guys to put it on there. That don't mean we're gonna do anything, that just means it's gonna be on the agenda come next month. And of course, that's a motion that I've made, and it will require a second, correct?
Yes.
A second.
I think we've got two or three seconds. Go ahead, I think, yes, we need to vote now.
I think it needs discussion.
Discussion.
Yes, so the second was Gary's property, is that correct? Okay, making sure we have that record correct. Now, we are in a time of discussion. So commissioners, if you will please use your device or raise your hand where I can see it, and you will be called on. Yes. Okay. Look, I can let them call. Okay. Avery, when?
Well, Gary Bailey.
It was never brought to a vote. It's a good question.
I'm sorry, what was the question that he said?
He asked how Mr. Bailey voted, and I said that it wasn't taken to a vote, because it wasn't required to go for a vote.
I would think something of that nature should be voted on by the planning commission.
You'd think.
Would that follow the rules of bylaws committed to? Is something like that in place for that?
I can answer that. I specifically asked our attorney about that, and no. Only the planning commission can put any type of rules or restrictions on the planning commission.
Angie, you have the floor.
Okay, um, a couple of facts that I'm just curious, because there's so many that you hear. And I will have to say, the gentleman that was here was Sandra Mager that spoke. The sad part is, he is a Vietnam veteran, he has very bad PTSD that he random, I mean, he hardly ever goes out of his home. So his property, and they have rental next door, does connect directly with Gary's. So imagine when the blast does happen, and he isn't that, that major, I mean, he is, has a lot of health issues there. My question is, is it true that Sandra, Sonia, excuse me, that is on planning and zoning, did go to the property when the news was present?
Yes.
That is true. So my question is, is Gary doing this as a citizen or as a planning commissioner?
As a citizen.
Okay, but why would Sonia be there? If that was me with my property, would I have, as soon as the news show up, somebody here from the committee to, to represent me and what I'm doing on my private property?
Because they invited him.
Because he invited him, but she spoke, and she spoke up to the news for him. And that, to me, is a conflict of interest. If I'm doing something on my property and I'm doing, and it's my property, then I am to defend my property. There should not have, he shouldn't have to have a spokesperson from planning committee there unless they are asking a question of what was done for the planning, but you're telling us that planning didn't happen. Is that correct?
She went there with credit, she was not there on her own.
She wasn't there on her own?
She was a woman trick.
But they were speaking for Gary's property, on his private property?
No, it was only facts.
So she was not on his property?
She was on his property, but I requested her to go with me, it's my chair, my chairperson.
But you, but I thought that planning and zoning didn't talk about this. You didn't talk about it in the meeting, so how would she, how's the chair representing your committee if you were never, if you never talked about it?
Because she is his boss. He is.
But how would she know the facts, other than at that moment? I guess I'm just saying, when you have a committee, usually the chair and the committee all discusses everything. So out of the blue, when this happened, and just the chair show up and the board never had, the committee never discussed it, how can the chair speak for the, the committee if you never had a discussion about it? I just feel like there's not all the answers here, and I'm very disappointed in my, because this is their only water source. I used to live in Roan Mountain up in Cove. You have a spring, that was it, we seen during the flood. And right now, you've got tree trunks showing everywhere. You've got trees that are not, I mean, the roots are showing because of the flood. What's gonna happen to those trees with just barely anything? Do we even know? We're not in the same places we were before the flood. And this is gonna be a disaster, just like how much money we're getting back that I warned everybody about on that situation. I pray I'm wrong, this is not gonna end well, and there'll be some other things not end well. But I've been quiet for a long time, because I'm just letting it ride on out, just like some of the other things that are done behind the scenes that people think, that won't show whether you're Republican or whether you're not, or whether it was, I don't know if y'all know, but my little resolution didn't get signed by the mayor. Different subject. I know. But you know, it just proved Billy Harrell's case, didn't it? The only resolution that was signed, and all the water issues in this town. So just let it all ride out, guys. Let's just keep the little elementary school, let's call each other, let's figure out who's gonna abstain, who's gonna do what, behind the scenes. We're gonna end up in a lawsuit in here if you don't quit. And you know who you are. And I'm tired of being told they're not allowed in your district, because sometimes I'm commissioner, and sometimes I'm at the TLC Center paying eight, $10,000 for campers that's in your own district. So I'm sorry, I'm mad, because those individuals thought Sandra does go to my church. I got hit up at church. How can you do this? How can they come and blow up my neighborhood? We, it's terrible. It's terrible and a disgrace. So you have my full support.
Yes, Donnie, you have one.
Todd and I have been dealing with this issue for a while. Wouldn't have come this far, everything was legal, we do all the permits are there, everything is legal, but the one thing we didn't do is have, be sympathetic and respectable, respectful to the community of Hampton, and Brimmer in particular. There was no, there was no community meeting, no transparency with this thing, even though everything was done above board, it was almost like something was being hit. I didn't know about it, basically, until the Thursday before that letter went to people's houses. I'm a commissioner in the 6th District. When this thing started, the 6th District Commissioner should have been notified, so we wouldn't have been bombarded by the residents in Hampton, particularly in the Brimmer section. There's a big scar on the mountain that will never heal. Once that's removed, it will take it years, and I can tell you from experience when I worked for the Forest Service, that it won't, it'll take it years to heal, because they're taking all the topsoil and leaving subsol and rock. Luckily, there might be some grass or rush row grow there now and then. That's not the point. The point is, there was no communication, transparency in this project. When the planning commission, most of the planning commission didn't know about it, why didn't, why didn't they just have some respect for the people and conduct a community meeting, which affects the whole community? And this veteran that's sitting there, and I'm a veteran, and there's several veterans in here, we know what he's going through, because he has many health problems, because of many different things that happened in Vietnam. Vietnam veterans, we understand that. It would have been helpful if the community had known that these permits was issued, here's the permits, here's what we're going to do, instead of trying to look like they were hiding So Todd and I have been with this thing, Todd more than myself, over the last two or three weeks. And I feel sorry for the, for the residents of Brimmer, because they wasn't involved in none of this. That's the least we could have do, and have some compassion and kindness for the people. We had none. We're Carter County, we're a religious county, we're, we're many Christians. We should have known, that community should have known. One little article in the newspaper back in April, and they identified it as a disbeth them. Was that transparency? No, that wasn't transparency. And you're back.
Carolyn, you have the floor.
I can understand where these people are coming from, I can sympathize with them, because we were done the same way in the Gat Creek District. They went in on, after Christmas, the weekend after Christmas, and started digging a road that would haul tractor trailer loads of mulch and dump it on 99 acres of property, and no one was ever told anything about it. This was debris, wood debris, that was gathered out of the streams and the lakes and stuff in North Carolina, transported across state lines, chipped up and dumped on the land. There was no liners put down, there was nothing put down. We went to EPA, they had the same concerns. They don't know what's in that wood. It sits there for five years. That's gonna soak into our well systems. There's people that had cattle on that same property that was being leased. Did we hear anything from anybody in Carter County? No, absolutely not. I'm not speaking as a commissioner right now, I'm speaking as a taxpayer, because that's what I am, just like these people are here. They have a right to be concerned about their water, they have a right to know what's going on in their county. That's one reason why I decided to run, maybe I can speak for our district. I called Leslie and Aaron, I called our commissioners, they didn't have any idea what was going I take that back, I think I called you, but you didn't answer, so I spoke with Aaron, so I didn't speak with you, I'm sorry. But Aaron, he's like, I don't know. I said, but you're our commissioner. I talked to the planning department, I talked to them several times, I got two and three different stories. So you don't know who to believe. If I say, there's nothing wrong, it may not be legally, that you have to do this by law, but you need to be self-conscious enough, or conscious enough, I guess I should say, passionate to say, these people, this is where they live, this is their livelihoods. We can take 30 minutes out of our month and go into the commission and tell these people, tell the commissioners what's going on. And we have no transparency in Carter County. There is none. And there's a lot of things that need to be changed in Carter County. And it's sad, because people look at us and they say, they laugh at us. And I've heard that many times since I've found, since people have found out that I have become a commissioner, and it's very sad. But we need to stop and think about our taxpayers, stop putting ourselves first and think about them and their livelihoods. I yield.
Brad Johnson, did you want to do that?
Yes, I have to, our attorney, our, our speaker, our chair. We've got a motion on the floor for removal of a member, regardless who it is, I'm not supporting, not anything, but there'd been no charges levied to remove somebody.
I think his motion is to put it on the agenda for next month. There is a notification required by the statute, and he, he will have to come with the, the proof or the justifications to convince you all, it takes two thirds vote of the county commission. But the only thing the statute requires is five business days notice to the person to be removed, so he has an opportunity to appear here. He's asking for that to happen next month, not for the removal to happen right now.
But you don't have to give specification what you're coming to direct.
One would think, but no, sir, that's not what the law says. There's no.
To take action without a charge or that somebody's got an answer.
Brand new law, it's untested, there are no opinions, no Supreme Court opinions or anything. So it's, it's an untested law, and you all can utilize it if you choose to, it may be challenged. Certainly, my opinion would be, there would, there would need to be calls to remove someone. And so if you're convinced that that cause exists, you can vote in the affirmative, it takes two thirds vote. He'll be free to challenge that in court if he decides to.
Does it come somewhere in line, like a center, the process that you have to go?
Well, the, the private act itself, that, that governs our planning commission since 1972, does not have a mechanism for removal. So this is a lighter pass state law that doesn't conflict with our private act, it supplements it. So, in my opinion, this is applicable here and can be used. Like I said, it's been, you know, in effect since April 3rd. So, test those laws.
Attorney, pardon, I ask you a question that I just thought about. What was the purpose in making sure that we have at least one representative from each district in the county as a member on the planning commission? What was the reasoning behind that?
Well, I think anybody can guess that, you know, they wanted representation from all parts of the county.
Bingo. Ask me if they got it.
Okay, I see you, you have the floor.
I was just wondering what the, the statute is.
Well, it was public chapter 132. As of yet, it's unofficially assigned, TC A55128, that may change, but the public chapter itself is, is 132.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else wish to speak before I call on somebody that has already spoken?
I would.
Okay, Nick Holder.
I've got a question, and I don't know who it's for, attorney, planning. You know, I understand these people are upset, as I would be, because it does affect their spring well. However, private property, and you know, I'm not an advocate for, we control what you do on your property, but you said this wasn't brought up before the planning commission, correct?
That's what I was told.
But he did get all the permits, by law. Is there a reason it wasn't brought up for the planning commission?
From what I was told, it wasn't required to go to the full plan, planning commission. So the decision was made by one person?
But if it wasn't required, I mean, I understand these people are upset, like I said, it is, I would be, but, you know, you've gotta think, what about the people when they were blasted for the new Highway 19E? Where the double bridges are, when they were blasted and all that, how many people did that affect? I mean.
I get that. Maybe.
You know, it's, I want to do what's right, but it's also a fine line.
And I agree with you, I agree with you totally, it is.
And I'm not, I'm not, you know, however, anybody votes, whatever, it's their decision, but like I said, I'm, I'm not for coming in saying, well, you can't put your building on your property.
This goes a little bit further than that, a, and I think that's, in speaking with our attorney again, if it was as simple as, as putting a rule in to give amount of land, and I'd say if you were going to uncover 50% of 30 acres of land, then at least take it to the planning committee as a whole. They have the ability to do that, they can write that in, but it has to come from the planning commission in order to do that. And that's all, it, we're not talking about telling you can't do it, but it would keep things like this from slipping through the cracks where the citizens don't know and the commissioners don't know, there would be no other excuse. But in this case, I don't think it would help because, as our attorney told us, that the whole reasoning behind having one from each district was to keep, to represent that district and to keep them in line, uh, as far as knowing what's going on. That's the big conflict it's interested me at this point in time. It, it couldn't happen, there, there's no way it could.
Thank you, I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, I heard, did I hear somebody over here that wants to talk?
I did.
No, Avery does. Okay, Danny Deal.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess everything's been done, done, done above board, but I think the procedure's all messed up because, you know, I would hate to live in that neighborhood, especially somebody coming to your door saying, we're getting ready to blast, you know, here's, you know, we've got to take pictures inside now. Uh, what gets me, I mean, what, what I think about is being on the beer board. You know, there's more, seems like there's more restrictions to selling beer than there is to putting it in a quarry. So, you know, they have a, they have a hearing, they have people come in, they have, people's able to voice their opinions on it, but yet you don't do that for where you're going to have blasting and big trucks and all that. To me, that's just kind of a bad procedure.
I agree.
I yield, thank you.
Avery.
I've got two, what I consider major concerns with this, you know, one is, how do you go from agriculture to blasting and heavy equipment without a zoning?
Yeah, that's what I wonder too.
And the second one is, who is going to be responsible for repairing that road when 80,000 pound trucks roll over and crumble it like Sycamore Street in downtown Isabelle? Is there some way we can hold the company responsible for repairing that road? That's supposed to have been done up there on Rips and Mountain, between Rips and Dam, where they dumped that field up there. My knowledge, it hasn't been repaid yet, and that dam and that lake is full again up Is there some way that we can legally require that company to do that?
I guess your ass can make it. The vehicles are properly licensed and permitted to operate on a county road, then no, uh, our roads are supposed to be built to withstand what is permitted and allowed to be hauled on regular truck. So if they do something negligent or that isn't compliant with the permits and whatever they have to abide by, then yes, maybe you would have a cause of action against the, the company, uh, but that would have to be proven, you just have to, you know, that has to be proven.
Well, that road is, it's a two lane road, yes, but it was not built to handle 80,000 pound trucks. I'll tell you that right now, because it goes up a place an 80,000 pound truck normally can't get to. It's like Rome Mountains, right after flood, we had 80,000 pounds going across that mountain left and right, and it broke that road down real bad. That's my two major concerns.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Ray. I just feel like this was done, it may have had the I's dotted and the T's crossed, but I feel like it was done sideways, and I feel like that anything that this commission can do to say that this never happens again, it's our responsibility to do it. I feel for these people, I really do, because it's going to bring hardship on them with water sources and, and all, I feel for them, their land values is going to lower, I mean, I feel for these people. We need to do what we can do.
And I think, and I've said, told other people, it, it's, there's no way this is going to be stopped. Unfortunately, that, that ship has done sail, ain't going to happen. I talked to Representative Hill a couple of weeks ago, and the first thing he asked me, is TDEC issued a permit? Yes, we can forget it. But he also said too, that as far as it going to the next step into a full quarry, if, if that ever happened, he said now in state Tennessee, it's almost impossible to get designated as a quarry, to the point where they've been told that if you have a quarry, you've got to go and stay with it because they're not issuing new permits, and that's why Representative Hill told me. But there have been indications that this is headed that way as well, so we shall see later.
Okay, Thomas. There was a question asked about zoning that wasn't answered. How can that go from a residential agricultural zone to a commercial zone? How did that happen? Because if they're selling that, it's now commercial. So how did that happen? Somebody?
It's about the processing. It's about the processing. If they just remove the rock and take it to another site, that's why it's called a borrow pit, they're borrowing the rock off of that land and taking it to an alternative site, which is also in Hampton, across from Hampton Bait Shop, where it will be processed, laid and sold. That's how it got by then. Again, all legal amount, but just another one.
It's disgusting.
And these are all loopholes that state's aware of, that there will be changes in the county. I guarantee you, from the people I've talked to, there will be changes in how this is going to be handled in the future. But we need to do what we can to protect our people first, and then if it happens bad, I wonder if not, at least we've done what we can. And of course, we're still here, oh, that's great, but I've stated my motion and what that concerns, and I'd like to call for a vote if I might.
Yes, sir. So the motion is to bring this up at the August meeting about the removal of Gary Bailey from the planning commission. So your vote right now is not yes or no to remove him, your move, vote right now is yes or no to bring it up next month. Does anybody not understand?
Yes, I do. Bring it up. He's not being charged, I mean, he's not having to come, you're asking him to come to the meeting, but for? You're going to bring it up whether you want to throw him off or not? Is that the reason?
Well, what the statute requires is that he's given five business days notice of the meeting when the vote on removal will occur. So you're deciding to put this on the agenda for next month where a vote on removal will occur, so he can be notified.
I can, I can give you a good legal reason if you want to.
No, no, I, I'm just trying to, remember, I come from a law fight of ours, I'm trying to reason that, you know, you called somebody to stand before you because you were going to cast their law, but you hadn't told them what the charge is.
I did.
Well, that's up to you, I mean, you know.
Certainly, basic due process would require that the person have the best notice and ability to defend himself of whatever the allegations are, uh, before they're voting on.
Well, the thing is, there's no allegations being made personally with a name. That being mentioned, you're on the floor, and that's, that's great, but if you're going to come in, I would tell you where to shove it. Unless you can claim a charge and prove it, I, that's just what I do. I know what TCA you're doing, tell me again, I'm pretty intelligent.
Well, we definitely had, we, I've stated, others have stated, a huge conflict of interest. That alone would be enough for removing us.
Hold on, I'm saying, you're going to ask a person, I don't care if they're a person or appointed person, and you're going, with the purpose of going to censure or to remove, there should be some charge, a probable cause been displayed, to be able to do that. And I know that, that's back when they just put headlights on cars.
That's still a lot of B's. He's laying in a hundred feet from his leg.
No, I found out in Rome Mountain, you know, getting a rider on a horse, a drunken horse at nighttime, it didn't have a red light on the back end. I'm still a no longer.
Dr. Avery, you have the floor.
Thank you. Before we move into time voting, that's Todd has called for, um, Johnny Attorney, how, what evidence does have to be presented that this is a conflict of interest? I didn't vote for Mr. Bailey for, uh, planning commission, I never voted for Gary Bailey for anything. But when we go through the due process, what kind of evidence does have, has to be brought to say it's a conflict of interest?
Well, generally, a, a conflict would be a financial benefit that you personally vote for, or in some way supervise, uh, you know, it, it appears that there's, you know, certainly there was no meeting and there was no vote on Mr. Bailey or anybody else. It appears that the allegation is because he's the landowner and because he's on the planning commission, that there was some favorable treatment given to him, that, you know, that benefits him personally, that would have to be proven. Uh, you know, just the bare fact that he's on the committee, he's a landowner that got something properly permitted, you know you like the process, doesn't mean by default there's a conflict of interest. You, you would have to prove the improper benefit or the improper from his position financially benefited.
Thank you, sir.
So if it's not proven that he's done anything wrong, and this committee or this commission votes to have him get off the planning, but it's proven that he's not done anything wrong, we just don't like the way it was done, what could be the repercussions for this county?
Well, certainly, he, he could have a personal cause of action, um, if, you know, you all don't get the benefit of having a judge that listed the evidence and make a decision, you are the judges, right? Under the statute, you all are making the decision. He gets the opportunity to review that in actual court of law, so if your actions, uh, are either, well, if, if your actions were taken definitely not in good faith, or if it could be shown that a reasonable person would not have felt this was a conflict of interest, certainly, he could have reinstated to the position, no doubt, and potentially tried to recover damages, or whatever that means to his livelihood or his reputation.
Mr. Dawson, I've seen your hand, this is, uh, this is not ordinary, but I'm going to allow you to speak for one minute, sir.
Okay. I would like to see the hands of the commissioners that are willing to build their house up there for the cost, for what it would sell for, whenever this comes to be. You're going to move 50%, and you're all willing to do that. Show me your hands, where are those things?
We can't do that, Mr. Dawson.
Well, by a little, you clearly go proper before you got.
Board of order, we already have a call for the vote.
Well, it does, because you're expected to, taxpayer, this county. It's not a side event, that's not one of the side.
This, this cannot be a back and forth, so I'm going to call for the vote.
That's one question I probably shouldn't be making.
No, Avery, I'm sorry, I'm calling for the vote.
Okay. Chair, you have the floor. Yes, here. Danny Deal. Paul Smith.
Yes.
On the table?
Yes. Yes.
Julie Quinn.
Yes. I will process, it will be on the agenda in hours, at the full, the regular meeting, the regular.
Thank you, Chair.
So let me ask this question, just to clarify, so, am I directed to send this notice to Mr. Bailey? How, how are we handling that?
Does the statute say anything about that?
It says he's received five business days notice, I mean, I'll do anything you all asked me to do, you voted to have it on the agenda, somebody's got to notify.
Tag your.
I mean, that's something you all got to decide.
Do you need a motion and a vote for him on that?
Well, I mean, I, I'm assuming since the majority of the commission approved putting it on the agenda, that, that, that same majority is in favor of me notifying Mr. Bailey, so their action could actually be considered, so that's, that's what we want to do.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Somebody correct me on that.
Okay, is there any other information or comments?
So will Mr. Bailey be allowed to speak?
Absolutely.
Exactly, I want to go for it. How do you feel, or is also to speak on his behalf, how, how does that work?
There's no particular guidance, but yes, I would say yes, uh, for, for purposes of due process, uh, he should be allowed to be here, you can have an attorney here with him if he wants to like. All that I have to say as far as cause of anything that I've heard here tonight, is a potential conflict of interest, so that's the only notification that I can give him as a reason why it's being considered.
It is sad that the statute was written in such a way, there's very little guidance, I would say that. You can do this, but you figure out how.
Well, as usual, all we can do is the best we can, and like I said, proper, proper notification and the right for him to, to be here and answer any charges, uh, and, and state his case is what we have to do.
Is there any specific way in which he has to be notified?
There is no guidance on that, but I'll send the name for any notification.
Okay, uh, well, in the event, this, where may have already been asked, so in the event he does not show up.
There's no consequence, the matter can still be considered, I, I would guess that Mr. Bailey is part of the notification being sent here, but I'll send him.
Does anybody else have anything else?
All of us, Eric, you have the floor.